I now call the Board of Trustees to order. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, and a quorum of the Board is present. The meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The first item on the agenda is our invocation led by Trustee Nelson and the pledge to be led by Trustee Horton.
Please stand with me in prayer. Before we start, I just would like to just spend a quick moment of silence because it's a lot right now, so just give me a moment, please. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts. Your Word says, "This is the day the Lord has made; let us rejoice and be glad in it." We're grateful and glad for this day and for the privilege of continuing to work with educating the hearts and minds of our children. Give us wisdom to discern and decide your will and your way for our lives, both individually and collectively. Give us courage against any and all forms of violence and hatred in the world like we witnessed over the last few weeks. Our nation is in turmoil, and we desperately need you. Our hearts are heavy upon hearing about the attacks of innocents throughout the country in Colorado and Charlotte, along with the assassination of Charlie Kirk, have reminded us that once again our humanity's sinful nature and that evil exists in this world. We know from your Word that there is an enemy of our soul who seeks to steal, kill, and destroy, but we also know that your Son offers us life to the fullest and empowers us through your Spirit to be your salt and light, your hands and feet, your agents and ambassadors of hope and healing. God, our hope is in you. We pray your comfort for all those who are hurting around the world right now. Wrap your arms especially around Charlie's wife and children, the families of the Annunciation Catholic Church School and Erna's family. Comfort them all as we walk through this valley. We also ask that in this moment, you be with us. Pour out your grace in this place in a palpable, tangible way. Let us feel your presence. Saturate the space with your peace, a peace that transcends all understanding, a peace that we can breathe in and breathe out. May everything we say and do and think tonight reflect the goodness and your glory. All this I pray in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you both very much. Moving on to item two on this agenda is special recognition for Read for a Better Life. Dr. Landry?
Thank you, Madam President. Conroe ISD and the Board of Trustees join with all members of the Conroe ISD Learning Community to promote the reading initiative, Read for a Better Life. Conroe Independent School District, along with the Board of Trustees, this week will begin the annual district-wide initiative, Read for a Better Life. Conroe ISD promotes a culture of reading by calling to action all adults within the Conroe ISD community to devote at least 30 minutes a day to reading aloud to children of all ages. Read for a Better Life is a simple task that requires few resources and results in so many benefits to students. The district is committed to this project and looks forward to the continued involvement of all members of the Conroe ISD community to read aloud to students.
Thank you very much, Dr. Landry. Okay, on to our next item, three, citizen participation. Individuals who have signed up to address the Board, please indicate the agenda item on which you wish to address the Board. Each speaker will have two minutes. Please remember that the Board cannot deliberate or take action on matters not listed on the agenda, but may direct the superintendent to look into the matter or place it on a future agenda. We ask that speakers address the Board respectfully and keep comments focused on matters related to district business. Tonight, we want every person who has signed up to have the opportunity to speak. Each of you has the right to address the Board within the two-minute limit, and we as a Board do not want to shorten that in any time regardless of how long it will take for us to get through it all. However, if your comments mirror a point already stated, we ask that you simply note your support or your opposition of a topic and leave the remainder of your time unused if you are so led. The Board would greatly appreciate this, as we have staff members who will be here late this evening and have to return early in the morning. Thank you for your courtesy in this matter. Ms. Burlock, please call the first speaker.
Virginia Orenz.
As you know, my name is Virginia Orenz. I am a parent of two CISD students. I'm an alumni of the Woodlands High School, and I'm actually a former teacher in CISD. I am here to voice my concern about the posting of the Ten Commandments in our children's classrooms. Have you thought of the situation you have placed our students, teachers, and staff in on a daily basis? We do not all have the same religious convictions, and we should not be subject to follow what others religiously believe or choose. What happens when children inevitably have questions about what's on the poster? Have our teachers and staff received multi-religious training to address these questions? Will children be ostracized for not being familiar with what's on the poster? Are we no longer recognizing the separation of church and state? Posting the Ten Commandments in classrooms is plainly religious in nature. Many parents do not want teachers to be theologians in a public school setting. As we all know, the posters were placed, people are here to donate posters, and the law and theory states that it's a teaching tool, more of our history, but who's donating the posters? The religious organizations. I reviewed the priorities that newly elected trustees ran on for election this past year and endorsed by the trustees at that time. Many of you stated you wanted to support parent rights, foster safe learning environments, be curriculum-focused, and work on teacher retention. Ask yourself, are you keeping these priorities for all students, for all teachers, for all staff, and us constituents, us that actually have a stake in the game, kids in the school, not just living in the county? Do these posters support these priorities or contribute to a divide? I am requesting you reconsider your decision and remove posters from our children's classrooms. Thank you.
Catherine Rodriguez.
Hi, I'm Catherine Rodriguez. I don't speak as eloquently as she does. As a parent of a CISD fifth grader, I'm trying to be polite, I'm sorry. I do not feel that any type of religious instruction should be placed into a classroom at all. If it was a different religion, y'all would feel very differently. I feel that if it's going to be there, it needs to expand across all religions and not just one. As a non-Abrahamic religion household, my child faces, kids on a daily basis already saying, "Well, why not? Why don't you believe these things?" And I feel that it's going to increase that division in my child's classroom and across her learning experience. Because not only is it now posted on the wall for children who do follow these faiths, but even within the Christian community, not everybody teaches that faith in the same way. And I feel that it causes a disservice and, again, division even amongst children, because children don't understand the differences in religions, and it's just not the appropriate place. That's home, that's church learning, that's not public school learning. And she said it much better than I can. I'm just a concerned parent, and it bothers me that my child is already facing backlash as a 10-year-old because our family has a different faith. And that's not okay. It's going to affect her learning, and I don't want that for her. She needs to be able to learn and feel comfortable in the classroom without the constant concern, "Well, when I talk about my faith, are my friends in the classroom going to think of me differently?" And as a firsthand parent, I feel that y'all need to be aware of that to take that into consideration, because I know where we live, it's not common.
Joshua Schwartz.
Hey, y'all. My name is Joshua Schwartz. I'm sure most of you know my name at this point from the daily emails you've been getting from me for the last two weeks. I stand here also to oppose the upholding of SB 10, which Governor Dan Patrick said that by placing the Ten Commandments in our public classrooms, it creates a moral compass for our children to follow. This is a violation of SB 12, Section 1.009, wherein it is prohibited for any public elementary or secondary school or district to infringe on our parental rights laid out by Family Code 151.001, which allows the parents to dictate the moral and religious education of our children. SB 10 is also a violation of Supreme Court precedent, wherein in Stone versus Graham, 449, U.S. 39, 1980, a similar and nearly identical law from Kentucky was struck down by the U.S. Supreme Court for lacking secular legislative purpose, being plainly religious in nature, and violating the Establishment Clause of the United States Constitution. This also violates Section 6 of Article 1 of the Texas Constitution. The bottom line is, it doesn't matter what Ken Paxton sent you, he's not a member of this elected Board. You are. You're in charge, and it's time that you stand up for the rights of the parents of this district and the children and not uphold SB 10.
Ellen Montner.
My name is Ellen, and I'm a parent of a second grader here in CISD. I know you care deeply about our kids, that's why you serve on this Board, and I understand the priority that you've placed on values and history, but Bluebonnet, as it stands, is not delivering the quality that our children deserve. Because it was pushed through very quickly, there wasn't enough time, there wasn't the usual amount of time for real educator review. That concerns me, especially knowing the criticisms raised in other districts that the curriculum is scripted, repetitive, overly reliant on worksheets, and light on creativity and writing. In our area, schools have been performing well, so it's confusing why we'd risk that momentum with such major untested shift. And now the gaps are clear. Teachers are tied to scripts that leave little room for small group interaction, students are stuck in workbooks instead of creating. The difference in my daughter's work from first grade to second grade is staggering. Last year, she brought home thoughtful stories and projects, and this year, it's almost all worksheets. At Pickup, I hear parents worried, and some families are already turning to tutors to fill in the gaps. On top of that, Christian references are woven into lessons, Bible stories, even the Ten Commandments. Under SB 12, I have the right to not consent to religious instruction, but when it's embedded into daily lessons and discussions, it's nearly impossible to truly opt out, and that violates the rights of parents under SB 12. So I'm asking you directly, how will you honor SB 12 when religious content is so built into the curriculum? How will you guarantee that every child, including those who opt out, receive the same high-quality education? And how will you engage educators and parents in making Bluebonnet better? Strong leadership means adapting when something isn't working, and tonight, I'm asking you to step up, create a clear process for gathering honest educator and parent feedback, and commit to making changes as we move through this first year. Please work with our teachers. They are skilled, experienced, and deeply invested in these kids. Our district has been so successful because of its educators, so please don't silence them, listen to them. If you truly want what's best for our children, that's where the solution will be. Thank you.
Lynn Walters.
Hello, I'm Dr. Lynn Walters. I live in the Woodlands. I'm a CISD parent and grandparent and a retired professor in the College of Education and Human Development at Texas A&amp;M University. Thank you. The purple people here, many of them are outside agitators, by the way, with no connection to CISD, would have you believe they want to place the Ten Commandments in CISD classrooms not for religious purposes, but because the Ten Commandments are an historical document that are the basis for America's founding principle. But the purple people are wrong. The Ten Commandments are not part of the legal or constitutional framework established by the founding fathers. The commandments were not the basis of the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution and all its 27 amendments, the Bill of Rights, the Federalist Papers, or any foundational documents. In fact, our founders purposely left religious assertions out of these documents because they deplored the commingling of government and religion. So if the Ten Commandments are not historical, why are the purple people and other outside agitators determined to put them in CISD schools? It's simple. They want to foist their own religious beliefs on our vulnerable children, children of all different faith communities. Thomas Jefferson, one of our most influential founding fathers, would be appalled by this move. He said erecting the wall of separation between church and state is absolutely essential in a free society, and to that, I say amen.
I am Deborah Lieber, a longtime resident of the Woodlands. My children attended Conroe ISD, and my grandson will begin kindergarten next year. I am here tonight to express my opposition to the hanging of Ten Commandments posters in CISD classrooms. I appreciate that as trustees, you must make difficult decisions and comply with the laws of the state. It seems to me that compliance with Senate Bills 10 and 12 presents the Board with a challenging dilemma, since these two laws that went into effect September 1st are in direct conflict with each other. SB 10 requires a specific Christian version of the Ten Commandments be posted in a conspicuous place in all public school classrooms. This law violates the principle of separation of church and state and is an unconstitutional attempt by politicians to impose particular beliefs about God on public school students. These posters conflict with my family's faith. I am very concerned that the posting of specific religious texts isolates students who do not conform to the government's religious doctrines. With SB 12, the Texas Legislature recognizes and protects the fundamental rights of parents to direct the moral and religious training of their child and to make decisions concerning their child's education. This law provides that the Board must establish a grievance policy and procedure for parents who believe instructional materials or religious texts posted in the classroom are usurping these rights. For example, under SB 12, parents have the right to opt out of any religious content contained in the Bluebonnet curriculum. Further, the Board must address concerns of parents who believe the posting of the Ten Commandments violates their rights. Since compliance with SB 10 forces students to view religious texts for more than 1,200 hours throughout the school year, the only way to respect parental rights as required by SB 12 is to remove these posters immediately.
Good evening, trustees. I come today in support of displaying the Ten Commandments in our classrooms. Not only are they part of our history and tradition, but right here in this district, we have proof that that legacy since 1939 at the Crockett Building in downtown Conroe, which still bears the inscription over the front door. "And ye shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free," John 8, verse 32. The Ten Commandments serve as timeless guidance, not only for Christians but for every person. The first four are often the most debated, yet when we look closer, they speak to universal values. No other gods before me. This is about priorities. We are reminded not to let destructive things like money, power, or addictions become our highest authority. No idols. This is about authenticity. Even without faith, it warns against idolizing false images, possessions, or ideologies that cannot give us truth. Do not take the Lord's name in vain. This is about respect in speech. Words carry weight, and this reminds us to speak with honor and truth. Remember the Sabbath? This is about rest and balance. Every human being needs time for renewal, to reconnect with family, and to find rhythm between work and rest. Scripture reminds us, "Show shall my word be that goes out from my mouth, it shall not return to me empty," Isaiah 55, verse 11. God's word always produces results. "And your word is a lamp to my feet and a light to my path," Psalms 119, verse 105. His word shows us the way, step by step. The Ten Commandments give us guidance, and when followed, will give us results. They are part of our history and tradition, but they are also words of love and life. Some people here claim the words to be offensive or not inclusive, but we can choose how we want to see these words and use these words as we read them with our families, and the families can reinforce their values with their children if they come with questions. For the children I work with that feel abandoned, who have no one to hug them when they are returning to home and they are hurting, God's word has been the very difference between despair and life. God's word brings them comfort when everyone else has forgotten them. Thank you.
Mark Brooks.
I'm a Conroe ISD parent who's against displaying the Ten Commandments in public school classrooms. I don't have time to go into all the reasons, and many of the other folks have explained it better than I could, but I want to address the argument that students don't have to read the Ten Commandments if they don't want to. Is it reasonable or is it even ethical to ask non-Christian students to avoid reading a poster that's prominently displayed in every single one of their classrooms from kindergarten until 12th grade? I don't think so. Also, I'm confused by the process that resulted in the posters being displayed over Labor Day weekend. Here's what happened at the August 19th Board meeting. The Board's counsel recommended against displaying the posters at this time due to an imminent preliminary injunction ruling. The meeting was adjourned without a vote to revise local policy, EMI, or to display the Ten Commandments. Here's what's happened since then. On August 20th, a U.S. District Judge issued a preliminary injunction prohibiting the display of the Ten Commandments in school districts that are enjoined by the litigation, which does not include Conroe ISD. On August 25th, the Attorney General's Office issued a press release that read in part, quote, "Schools not enjoined by ongoing litigation must abide by SB 10 and display the Ten Commandments. The woke radicals seeking to erase our nation's history will be defeated. I will not back down from defending the virtues and values that built this country," end quote. Is the AG providing legal guidance, or is the AG making a political statement? I'd argue the woke radical comment gives an indication. And isn't religious freedom one of the virtues and values that the AG vows to defend? Who made the decision to display the posters in every Conroe ISD classroom? Was it made by the Board President, one of more trustees outside of the public forum, or by the interim superintendent, or somebody else? Regardless of intent, the decision-making process was not transparent. I call on the Board to make a decision publicly. Should the posters be displayed or taken down? I'm asking every trustee to go on the record. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Jerry Nash, and I am here tonight, along with many others, to speak in support of the display of the Ten Commandments in our schools. Until last Wednesday, September 10th, I'm not sure I would be here advocating for this or any other cause. The tragic events of that day have moved me to know that I can no longer stand on the sidelines. Our country is in dire need of God's wisdom that is contained in the Ten Commandments as a guide for our nation's healing. You may have noticed that there are a number of people here wearing the color purple. I'd like to take this opportunity to explain why we have chosen to wear this color. Throughout Scripture and Christian history, the color purple has been associated with royalty to those in power like kings or high priests. For us gathered here this evening, it represents the royalty of Christ, the King of Kings. The purple robe that the Roman soldiers placed on him at the crucifixion became a symbol of his ultimate victory. People who represent... Purple also represents patience and humility. It reminds us that through repentance and faith, there is forgiveness, freedom, and hope. We stand here tonight in our purple as a statement of our unity, our faith, and our commitment to guiding the next generation, your students, our children, who are our best hope for the future with truth, morality, and hope. The Ten Commandments are more than words on a tablet or a poster. They provide a moral compass, a foundation for life, and a light to guide our children through a world that especially now feels dark and hopeless. That's why we're wearing purple to declare not only that Jesus Christ is King, but also that the wisdom of God contained in the commandments still matters. There is a moral fiber in parts of our society that is missing that needs to be found. I profoundly believe that the Ten Commandments, this is a good place to start. Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Jonathan Neal. I'm a husband and a father of two young girls who are quickly approaching school age. My purpose in addressing the Board tonight is in hopes that they will implement strict adherence to SB 12 as it relates to Sections 2 pertaining to restrictions on further promotion of DEI ideology as well as Section 20 regarding restrictions placed on instruction relating to human sexuality and gender identity. At its core, diversity, equity, and inclusion ideology promotes a view of humanity that is antithetical to reality. DEI at its core negates the very premise for respect and decency between human beings, that premise being that every individual, regardless of their race, ethnicity, or any other personal characteristic, exists as unique image-bearers of God, possessing inherent worth and deserving of respect. Principles birthed from DEI philosophy promote a worldview which hyperfixates upon one's physical characteristics and inevitably leads to the supposition that an individual's merit and value, their being deserving of a position or role on a team, is most deeply tied to the color of their skin, not their competency or character. DEI initiatives are incapable of cultivating harmony or healthy cohesion amongst people of differing races. As it relates to Section 20 of SB 12, I would like to commend its language protecting the sacred right that parents have to lead, educate, and discipline the children that have been entrusted to them by their Creator. The fact that this amendment is even necessary is unfortunate. There's a great degree of trust that parents place in those they send their children to. It is expected that an educator will seek to lead a student towards greater understanding and mastery of the subject they are employed to instruct. The student's sexuality and identity, quite frankly, should be none of their concern. If concerns about a student's well-being arise, rather than circumventing the parent's authority by offering counsel or information which may only serve to obfuscate a solution, the instructor should contact their parent or guardian. Again, I implore the Board to implement strict compliance with SB 12.
Arthur Urb.
I go by Randy, Randy, not Arthur. I'm here to oppose the posting of the Ten Commandments in the classrooms here. One of the concerns I have is, another one, it looks like on my printout, it's got almost 12 commandments, so what that says to the kids. The other thing, too, is that it tracks pretty much the Protestant version of the Ten Commandments. So I was wondering what that says to our Catholic fellows. When I was in school, I remember that before the Supreme Court rulings, we used to have readings from the King James Version of the Bible and, of course, the Lord's Prayer, et cetera. And... And we disregarded the wishes of the Catholics, just simply said, "Well, go out and get your own schools." I don't think that that's the kind of situation we want to be fostering now. So that's basically the gist of my comments. Thank you.
Bella Mathis?
I am Bella Mathis, a sophomore and student council officer at Conroe High School. As I speak to you today, I am not only speaking and representing myself, but for and about the rest of the students who feel and are being silenced due to Conroe ISD's actions, since you won't speak for them. On August 1st, Conroe ISD published an Instagram post in regards to the new cellphone policy. This post received thousands of views, as well as hundreds of comments from students and parents. Majority of student comments specifically stated that Conroe's letting this phone policy take their attention even further away from the constant drug use and gun violence going on in our school. As of August 20th, every single comment with any relation to those topics was deleted. Waiting just over two weeks to delete these comments means most commenters aren't aware of the fact that they are being silenced, but they are now. These students are using their voices and are being denied. Unlike most of your children who don't attend the district you're in charge of running, high schoolers need communication throughout the day. We are the ones being affected the most, and we are the ones being directly silenced. Why do you preach about protecting your students but can't listen to them as they beg for your help and their safety? Not many students have publicly voiced their opinions on the commandment matter because they know they'll be shut due to contradicting beliefs with the school board. As students walked into school Tuesday, September 2nd, we were faced with the Ten Commandments in every classroom, commitments that don't apply to many students' religious beliefs. Meaning, four-year-old students were faced with a new poster on the wall saying, "Thou shall have no other gods before me." What do you think went through the minds of the children who have been raised Buddhist or Muslim? What do you think went through the minds of the teachers as they were asked, as the students proceeded to read, "Thou shall not commit adultery," and asked what that meant? Do you want to be the person to explain to a four-year-old that adultery is having a voluntary sexual intercourse relationship between a married person and someone who is not his or her spouse in the same classroom those students are still learning how to count? So please, using the ears and eyes you would say God blessed you with, listen to your students as they plead for your help. And to any students that see or listen to this, know that you have a voice and your opinions matter. And purple is pursued for side prevention, not religion.
Stephen Powell? Stephen Powell?
I cannot follow that up. Good evening, board members. My name is Stephen Powell, and I'm a parent of two children in the district. I am also a lifelong Texan and a Christian. I want to start by recognizing the importance of children developing and learning strong morals. We need no reminder of the challenges faced in Texas or the nation when those values are not taught or they are disregarded. I believe you all, as the school board, support this idea as well. However, the district's policy to display the Ten Commandments in every classroom, while perhaps well-intentioned, I do not believe is the appropriate method. As a Christian parent, I believe it is my fundamental right and responsibility to guide my children's spiritual education. This is not a responsibility that I want to abdicate to the state or to the school board. And I believe this is a value that all parents in our community share. And that is regardless of their background. I especially believe this is valued by parents here that are not of the Christian faith. Just as it is my right, it is theirs. I do not want to lodge my opposition, however, without offering a solution or an alternative. If our shared goal is to encourage positive character development and ethical behavior, I urge the board to consider alternative proven programs, curricula such as Character Counts or Positive Action, which teach universal values such as trustworthiness, respect, and responsibility. And it does it without relying on the tenets of a single religion. By adopting these types of programs, we can achieve our shared goal of building good character in our students while upholding the rights of all families in our community. Thank you.
Susan Haji?
My name is Susan Haji. I'm with Transportation, but I am a graduate of McCullough when it used to be a high school. I am a parent of two students that have gone through Conroe ISD, and my nieces and nephew, and I am now an employee of Transportation. First and foremost, I want to state, I appreciate half the people that have been up here so far. I agree 100%, except, there is so much diversity in our community, in our schools, in our state, in our country. I'm proposing, we do something that we can meet in the middle. We don't seem to do that anymore, but I know we did when I was growing up. If it needs to be in the school, put it where it needs to be, in a library, in a history class, in a social study class. Find a way to meet in the middle so that all parties are happy, because we are such a diverse community. And I come to you as a Christian, but my ex-husband, my children, who follow the Muslim, not too happy about what's going on. So we need to find a way to bridge the gap for everybody that's standing behind me and in our community. Someone had said about rest and balance, because I'm going to go back to, of course, my favorite place, Transportation, needing help down there. Rest and balance, funny. Saturday, Sunday, not supposed to be workdays, that's a joke. We work in Transportation because we have to pay for our bills. We need to stop this. Our country... Or, we need to do something about retaining our drivers. I currently am at Oak Ridge now. I was at Woodlands last year when I started my campaign with you all, and my love for you all to come every month. But, it's very important that we do something to retain our drivers. We do something to keep staff. I am currently working in East County, because I love to be everywhere. Please just remember us, don't forget us. We still need help, desperately. We need people, bodies, we need raises, because my people are struggling every day. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you.
Brianna Loganov?
Hi. I am a parent to four kids, and only two of them right now are in the school district. And they will... I will eventually have more coming through. And some of the issues I have is with the Blue Bonnet review. Eight plus four equals seven. That is the type of review that these kids and the teachers are currently experiencing. There is other mistakes throughout the entire program, calling an animal as whimsical, listing an animal as whimsical, which I have copies of that you guys can see. This program was not thoroughly reviewed. There was... There's many mistakes that me as a parent have found, teachers have found, they have voiced their concerns. This is just not the high-quality product that it has been marketed as. This is not what the Conroe students deserve. They deserve a product that has been thoroughly vetted and thoroughly reviewed. And eight plus four does not equal seven. I know that Conroe has not quite ruled out the math portion of Blue Bonnet yet, but I know that you guys are looking at doing it next year. And it's not just the math that has issues, it's the reading as well. My kids are coming home with only worksheets, they're just scribbling. My kindergartner is not writing a single letter until November. It's... It hasn't been thoroughly vetted at all. And I also just want to add that I strongly oppose the Ten Commandments. It does not... It's not inclusive of my neighbors, and there are wonderful kids that also go to Conroe. It's divisive, and it's just not okay. Thank you.
Kristen Brown?
Dr. Ted, Board of Trustees, you represent me. I live and work here in the Conroe ISD bounds. I'm a parent of two students, and I am the community you represent. Not all purple people are the same. Today, I'm wearing purple also in recognition of Suicide Awareness Month, and it's my favorite color. Regarding Agenda Item 5B, which is SB 10, I understand y'all are in a pickle. The state has passed a law, which I believe will likely be found unconstitutional based on all the precedents mentioned. So I support your following the law. Also know that when you promote the Ten Commandments beyond what the law requires, that you are representing you, not me. Remember that "all" means "all." Though I'm disappointed it took me so long to realize that that motto has been wiped from all CISD websites. Regarding Item 8, CND, which is the legal expenses items, thank you for giving the time to share that information. I know that came up last month, and it was a hot topic, so thank you. And also regarding Items 9 and 10 from the agenda, that's 19 board policies in one meeting. I try to stay informed when I can, I'm not always successful, but good golly, 19 is a lot. That's a lot for me to try to catch up with, to understand what the revisions are, and that's asking a lot of yourselves. So, I don't know what you can do about that, but give yourselves time, and give us, as your community, time to teach ourselves to become aware, so we can support you and give you the feedback that you're looking for. Thank you.
Michelle Knuckles?
We live in confusing times. Where up is down, and even phrases like "all means all" are twisted into weapons against those who care about protecting young people. This past week, Charlie Kirk, a man who spoke truth and love to students nationwide, was martyred by a young person misled into believing that honesty is hate. In response, a teacher from Mitchell Intermedia posted on Facebook, "CK died promoting an ideology that was problematic at best. He represented the very worst of American ideals. Violence is not the answer, but CK was a champion of it. Chickens come home to roost." When challenged, he doubled down. "This is tragic, and I fear for our country, but considering his past statements, I have no empathy." This is where we are. On parent Facebook groups, teachers in this district feel comfortable mocking, demeaning, and dismissing those who stand for the values this nation was built on, the Ten Commandments, the principles of truth and responsibility. Parents and community members who speak up are bullied by the very people entrusted with shaping our children. I urge the board to establish a clear policy on employee conduct. Debate and disagreement are a healthy part of a free society, but crossing the line into cruelty, contempt, and unbecoming behavior has no place in Conroe ISD. We are not agitators, by the way. I know y'all know that. We are taxpayers, citizens. We are... I was educated here, I have family who attends here, and I pay taxes here. I love y'all. I want y'all to know that. Thank you.
Diane Daniels?
Hello. Welcome to the district. Oh, no. First... Jeez, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. I spoke in January about the Blue Bonnet not being right for the district, that it was age inappropriate. Now you're feeling the repercussions of that, and people are seeing it, they've been in testimonies here tonight. About the Ten Commandments, I am 100% for the Ten Commandments being in the schools. I personally lived overseas in a country, Saudi Arabia, that doesn't allow that. This country has multiple religions in it. But, we were... We're Christian. We're God-fearing people. You start this meeting with the prayer, okay? We all say, "Amen." To God, Lord Jesus, the Holy Spirit. Do you oppose the Christmas parties and the Christmas breaks? That was based on Jesus's birth? But y'all, take off and enjoy it. What about Easter? Do I hear anybody complaining about the Easter breaks? Nooo. We have time off. No problem, let's go and do something else. What about when the schools was pushing the pride flags? Or the pornographic books? Or the library having the self-mutilation books? Were there any outpourings of that? That's disgusting. What... I don't care what religion you are, to push that on children? Say, "We'll opt out of it." But again, a child goes in the library and can see whatever they want to see and take it out? That's disgusting. But the basis of the Ten Commandments is appalling to everybody? Give me a break. We need more love, we need more God. And the children who don't understand that, maybe a speck will bring the light of Jesus Christ into their hearts. It's not for everybody. I get that. There... My sister was married to an atheist. I respect that. Thank you.
Destiny Milton?
I am here tonight to voice my strong opposition to the displaying of the Ten Commandments in our schools. This action is not only divisive, but it also violates the First Amendment right. Yesterday, while talking about the posters with Nicole May, she openly acknowledged that federal law always trumps state law. So, if this board knows these posters violate the Constitution and conflict with the new SB 12, why are we being complicit? You ran on the promise to protect parental rights and to listen to the community through open discourse. But, it is clear that this courtesy only extends to the select few who align with their personal values. I came tonight with a gift for you. In my hand, I have a binder. It contains over 270 CISD parents, staff, and community members' voices. These are not out-of-district activists like those who came here tonight in support of the posters. These are your constituents. 93% of them demand that you immediately remove the posters. In contrast, here's your 19 submissions that were submitted in favor. Data does not lie. The binder shows that when you tell these voices in this binder that they are the minority, and then try to silence them, you are spinning a narrative to justify your divisive policies. And to make it absolutely clear, if you came here tonight and you actually live in CISD, please stand up. Board members, take a look. These are your constituents. These are the voices you were voted to serve. The supporters that you brought in tonight do not represent this district. We do. These are our kids, our schools, and we will continue to fight for them. Oh, man, that was worse than I thought. So, take the posters down now, or I promise you, the voices in these binders and across the district will demand reparations not only from the board, but from the individuals that serve on it violating their rights.
Robert LaBelle? Robert LaBelle?
Ladies, good to see you. Haven't seen you in a while. I live in this district. I've got six kids. Five have graduated CISD, right... Well, Conroe, right over here. I got one left in there, I got grandkids in the system. So, I... I am deeply in here. So, let us remember the reason schools were started hundreds of years ago was for the population to be able to read the Bible. God was mentioned four times in the Declaration of Independence. The Declaration of Independence was a list of grievances we, the colonies, had with King George. The Constitution was how we were going to fix these grievances and form a more perfect union. Our nation was started and dedicated to God. On... In 1789, on April 30th, after George Washington's inauguration, George and Congress went to the St. Paul Chapel in New York City and prayed and dedicated the United States to God. At this point in history, all 13 colonies had a declaration of faith in the state constitution. Nine of the 13 state... Stated a denomination in their constitution. Eight of the nine stated a form of Protestant, and the nine... Eight of the nine stated a form of Protestant, and the ninth was Catholicism, Catholicism. The federal government did not state any since it would have disrupted and overridden the colonies. That's why there is nothing in the federal constitution, because the states had their In 1798, John Adams, our second president, in a message to the officers of the Massachusetts militia, wrote, "Our Constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." You gotta be kidding.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Landry. Tonight, I wanted to commend the board for implementing the Ten Commandments in every classroom in Conroe ISD. That was quite a task, and you had to do it by September 1st, and I'm so proud that you were able to orchestrate the hanging of these character-building attributes in our school district. I feel that God will bless Conroe ISD for the act of obedience to this law, but more importantly, displaying God's Word before 74,000 children and the positive effects it will have on them. We do not know what fruit will come of it, but we do know that spreading God's Word, He always blesses that. Thank you so much. Stand strong. I'll be praying for you.
Hello. My name is Rebecca Rosenberg, and I am a mother of two beautiful children, age three and five, one of which is in a CISD kindergarten. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today to speak against the posting of the Ten Commandments in public schools. Public schools are funded by taxpayers of all faiths and of no faith, and they exist to educate, not indoctrinate. To privilege one religion over others violates the principle of separation of church and state, a cornerstone of our democracy. When we allow Christianity or any religion to be taught as truth in public classrooms, we send a harmful message that some beliefs are more valid than others. This not only excludes students of diverse backgrounds, but it risks sowing division among them. Our schools should be places where every child feels welcome, respected, and free to think critically. Religion is deeply personal, and its proper place is in homes, families, and houses of worship, not in government-run classrooms. Instead of narrowing students' minds by enforcing one faith, let's expand their horizons by teaching history, science, literature, and civic values that unite us all. True freedom of religion means the freedom to choose what to believe or not believe at all. Let us protect that freedom by keeping public education secular, inclusive, and focused on knowledge that benefits each student equally. Thank you.
My name's Angela. Excuse me. Texas is one of the most diverse states, especially Houston and the surrounding communities like Montgomery County. This diversity is one of the reasons that I chose to raise my kids here. Diversity is important to me. I feel that it grows a more empathetic child into a better, you know, more empathetic adult. I also think that the more exposure that our kids get to different cultures, different languages, and belief systems, the better decision-makers they'll be when they become the leaders of our country. I am opposed to the SB 10, primarily because it is only, it's a single religion. It only pushes the one belief system. Where's the other representation? Where's the other, the other, the other views? And I think that those are important for our kids. I can appreciate some of the things out of the Ten Commandments. I'm all about teaching my kids not to steal or to respect their parents. I'm all about teaching good morals, but let's be inclusive. Let's not make it about a religion. Let's make it about teaching them to be good people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily. I am a parent of a current CISD student and also a graduate of CISD myself, class of 2006. I am opposed to the forced display of the Ten Commandments in public school classrooms. I believe in the separation of church and state. I also do not appreciate seeing the Ten Commandments, which are sacred and precious to so many, being made into a symbol of government overreach, but I am concerned that is what this bill is doing. I also feel that this has created a huge distraction from the many real issues facing our education system. While I understand that this mandate did not originate with this board, I do think it's important that you hear our voices and know where the constituents you represent stand. Many of you ran on a platform that included tenets such as parental rights, ending indoctrination of children, and keeping personal ideologies out of the classroom. So, with each decision you make, and as you consider how to spend all of the valuable time and energy that you dedicate in service of this district, I respectfully ask you to please be reminded to prioritize our children's education and supporting our educators over imposing personal, political, or religious beliefs. Thank you.
You know, everybody loves diversity until it gets to Christian ideas. First, congratulations for hiring a conservative superintendent. Job well done. Now we have someone that knows men aren't women, math isn't racist, and the KKK wasn't created by Democrats, not Republicans. So that's a great start. To the wonderful people here who take issue with the Ten Commandments, I have one question. What values was this country founded on? Was it founded on atheism? No, nothing is, ironically. Was it founded on Islam? Was it founded on Buddhism? Nope. Try again. It was founded on Judeo-Christian values. This is the American culture we're standing in, and we aren't required to honor every single belief. Again, this is American history. Have any of you ever tried going to Iran and demanding that they satisfy your beliefs? Try it. In Afghanistan, females are banned from schooling beyond sixth grade, not allowed to work, can't travel without men, and even public parks are closed to women. Ask them to satisfy your beliefs. In Iran, women are arrested for uncovered hair. Think you could build a church there or anything else? In Brunei, death by stoning just for being gay. Look, we've already had the left-wing death cult DEI religion entrenched for decades in so many of our schools. That's the religion. Why do you think so many kids are mentally ill and cutting off body parts? How is that working out? When I say thou shalt not murder and thou shalt not steal, how awful to expose our kids to those thoughts. If just those two thoughts proliferated within your children, would our world be a better place or not? To the fabulous seven, you do not have to honor any or all of the people demanding hundreds of separate beliefs. Just honor our history. God bless Charlie Kirk, his family, and all who love him.
Jonathan Houland.
Good evening, board members, esteemed colleagues, police officers in the audience. We appreciate your service. Thank you for your service. I want to thank all citizens that came here tonight to speak. It is a true testament to the United States of America, the First Amendment, and that we can discuss these issues in a free and peaceful forum. It's very important to acknowledge that in light of recent events. I'm president and general counsel of Remnant Law. We are a public interest law firm. We represent clients at no expense on matters of religious liberty. I'm also not an outside agitator. I went to New Caney High School. I grew up in Montgomery County. I have kids, not in the district, but in Montgomery County, but I do pay taxes in Conroe. I'm here not to debate the Stone case, the Kennedy case, the Lemon test, the veracity of the injunction on the eleven school districts that does not include Conroe ISD. I'm not here to talk about was SB 10 supposed to be passed, was it not supposed to be passed? Did the legislative council do their job? I'm not going to talk about that. All I'm going to say is, you have a duty and responsibility, you have a law passed by the state of Texas, signed by the governor. You are not under injunction, so does your duty and responsibility to uphold that law. And I'm going to tell you one more story. There was a district attorney down in Nuonesis County that was not following the law. Yours truly filed a lawsuit to remove him from office under Local Government Code 87 for official misconduct. And Mr. Gonzalez is no longer the district attorney of Nuonesis County. And I submit to you that any school board member, I'm not making any claims here, any school board member that condones or endorses the removal of the Ten Commandments when it's a law that has been passed, that would be official misconduct, and you would subject yourself to a removal lawsuit under Local Government Code 87. So, thank you for your time. God bless the United States of America.
PJ Goodhose.
My name is PJ. I'm a Conroe ISD parent, and I am against the Ten Commandments in our classrooms. The argument for the Ten Commandments is a classic example of why Texas is ranked so poorly in public education. There are more than 10,000 religions in the world. The only reason that these people behind me believe in what they believe in is because they were indoctrinated as children, and as adults, they haven't developed the ability to critically think for themselves. Is this what you really want for the children of Texas? Do you really want to brainwash them into believing your ideology? Displaying religious texts in public schools raises serious concerns about the separation of church and state. The First Amendment guarantees that government institutions should not endorse any particular religion. By hanging the Ten Commandments, we risk sending a message that favors one faith over others, which can alienate students from diverse backgrounds who may not share those beliefs. In cases like Stone v. Graham, 1980, the Supreme Court ruled that posting the Ten Commandments in public schools violates the Establishment Clause of the Constitution. This ruling emphasizes that our educational spaces should be inclusive environments where all students feel welcome regardless of their religious beliefs. We must ask ourselves whether such displays genuinely contribute to moral education or simply serve as a political statement. Education should focus on critical thinking and understanding various perspectives rather than promoting specific religious ideologies. And by the way, that young high school student that spoke earlier, when she runs for public office, I will be voting for her. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jen. A little short. I'm here to oppose the Ten Commandments and the Blue Bonnet curriculum in our schools. While, yes, this country was founded on Christian faith, the real reason was that people escaped religious persecution so they could enjoy the ability to worship and believe how they wanted to. We are a country founded on religious freedom. We are all free to believe how we wish. This concept is protected by our Constitution. Public schools are meant to bring kids together, not push them apart, and requiring this in schools will do more harm than good. When the government requires the Ten Commandments in classrooms, it crosses an important line that it favors one religion over all others, that sends a message that some children and some of their families belong more than others. The Ten Commandments themselves even are interpreted differently by different Christian denominations and by individual families. As a parent to a child who will be attending Conroe ISD school soon, I want to protect my right to be the primary decision-maker over what and how my child is taught about religion. Every family deserves that freedom to guide their own children's spiritual lives. That's not the role of public schools and should not be the role of our government. Our Constitution protects that freedom by keeping faith a personal choice and not a government mandate. Beyond the legal issues that everybody's talked about, requiring religious roles in schools distracts from what the schools should be doing best, and that's teaching children the skills they need to thrive. That's reading, math, science, problem-solving, critical thinking, which they're lacking a little bit of. Families should have transparency and choice. This will ensure that their schools strengthen their character and skills rather than advancing a political or religious ideology that might not align with their family's values. Ideals like kindness, honesty, respect, these can be taught in ways that welcome every child, and that should be regardless of their backgrounds and beliefs. Mandating the Ten Commandments will not unite our communities. It risks creating division. Real respect for families means letting them have the freedom, people like me, to decide what moral and spiritual path is right for their child in their own home. And I'd really like, right now, to take a moment for Melissa and Mark Hortman, because nobody seems to want to do that here.
President, members of the board, Dr. Landry, I'm here to speak on behalf of myself. I am so upset and frustrated. I just want to ask you the question. What are you doing? What are you doing? You ensured us during your campaign that you are not running an agenda. Do you remember that? Hmm, I do. Let me reiterate, you must believe, just like people have already stated today, you must believe in the separation of church and state. Our country had natives here that were not Christian. They believed in gods. We took over, and we resorted and pushed them out of their lands. Let's get back to that. People are so proud of our founding fathers. Let's get back to the real history lesson there, okay? I'm also disappointed in your decision to approve our unrigorous Blue Bonnet curriculum. We have, in years past, have been blessed with people that have looked and poured their hearts into looking at the rigor of our curriculum that we share, and that teachers were proud to display and instruct in the classroom. What happened? What happened? The ball was dropped. Remember our large, diverse population in our district? We need to show support and respect for all people. All people, okay?
Hi. I've taught in the Conroe District for at least 15 years. I've been taught for 33 years. Conroe is, means a lot to me. I am for, and I thank you, nothing, it's going to be about the truth, nothing that's going to be good is going to come easy. And God even said, "It's going to be tough, but we have to get through it." We've gotten through, I don't understand why people are against... We've gotten through, I don't understand why people are against it. I don't understand, are they, they're for the porn in our books, porn in our schools, but yet you can't put the Ten Commandments up? It doesn't make sense to me. And we were founded on the Bible, on the Bible. That was the first thing, that was our first schools. They went out and taught the Bible. And Bible is all religions. It's not a religion, it's all religion. It's in the Bible. The Bible is what we need to go back to. We have so many people, we have gone so far away from the Bible right now, that people are going like, well, we can do this, and we can do this. No, no, it's what God wants you to do. What does God want you to do? If you can get back to that, then maybe we can find out what's wrong with a lot of these people that are having a tough time in our society, which will then get back to them in education. We have come so far. All right, we need to get back to God's law. God's law is over man's law, okay? That's called inalienable rights. Your inalienable rights are what rights that God has given to you. So whenever you hear inalienable rights, it's the rights that God has given you, okay? We are into ourselves so much right now. We are in a me generation. We are not in a generation that has God first, and that's all we need. We need to get back to that, and thank God for y'all. I appreciate every single one of you. Thank you.
Thank you all for your words tonight. All right, we're moving on to the next agenda item, which is consent agenda. Items included A through L are listed on the agenda. Trustees have had the opportunity to review these items in advance. Are there any items to be removed for separate consideration? Item I needs to be removed from the consent agenda and tabled until September 18th meeting, but outside of that, are there any other items? Hearing none, we will, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved, with the exception of item I.
Thank you.
Removing item I.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustees Nelson and Dawson. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hand. All opposed? The item carries, and we will move on. Sorry, I have to jump a long way. Okay, moving on to administration.
Hold up. We have a speaker that missed, and don't forget, we call her name. You can hear now. Are you off your guest?
Yes, but we had so many, we didn't go back and call them all. Sorry, we've already moved on from that. Okay, agenda item five, administration. We're up to the superintendent's report. We will receive an update from the attendance boundary committee regarding attendance zones for Grand Oaks Junior High and Casey Arnold Elementary. Mr. McCord.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Landry. Tonight, I am here to give you an update, a kickoff introduction of the zoning process for Casey Arnold Elementary and Grand Oaks Junior High. So as we get started, before we do that, I want to take a trip down memory lane, if you will avail me, and talk about where we are in the 2023 bond zoning process. So along the way, with your help, leadership, and guidance, and approvals, we successfully been able to zone Isla Elementary, Campbell Elementary, both campuses are off to a great start, Timber Mill High School, Cartwright Junior High, Fowler Intermediate, and then of course, we're here for Arnold and Grand Oaks. Grand Oaks, I thought it was worth a mention that the ninth grade campus at Candy Creek and at Grand Oaks are also part of the 2023 bond zoning construction program, but as those are standalone, everyone in those respective feeders go to those schools, they do not require zoning. So that's where we are as of tonight. So we're coming around the third turn of the track headed for home with Arnold Elementary and Grand Oaks being the last 100 meters. If you look here, you can see where we are in the process September 16th, which is where we are tonight with you here, with the first of three presentations to you. I would note, if you look at the top, we are now getting into the heart of our zoning as a committee for Arnold and for Grand Oaks. And then you can see we have a number of meetings coming up for the clientele of the parents, patrons, community members that are interested in this rezoning. They start in just a couple of weeks. They will be both virtual, they'll be in person, boots on the ground. We will also have those recorded to meet the needs of anyone who may be interested in this process along the way. This is a first look at Casey Arnold Elementary. Casey Arnold Elementary is projected to have a capacity of 950 students and slated to open in August of 2026, so not too far down the line. It'll be at 5175 Woodson Spring Road, and we're anticipating it being a K through six campus. We'll talk more about that momentarily. Here's a first look at Grand Oaks Junior High. This is from the west, looking toward the east. If you look at it, you'll see the front entrance to Grand Oaks Junior High. It is slated to have a capacity of 800 students and open in August of 2027. It's at 28075 Woodson's Grand Drive, if you're familiar with that area. That road is being constructed and is scheduled to be done in the next 60 days, if you're in the greater Grand Oaks community. I want to talk about this slide, because there's a lot to unpack. This is the building or edifice that will hold both the Grand Oaks Junior High and the Grand Oaks High School ninth grade campuses. So if you look at it, it is one contiguous building. There is a wall down that separates the two, so that never the twain shall meet until you or a future board designate that they shall. If you look at it, the Grand Oaks High School, this is anything but to scale, but at the very top left, you can see to what would be if this was a map up to the northwest where Grand Oaks High School is. That is across the parking lot. This is on the same contiguous parking lot as Grand Oaks High School. On the west, you have Grand Oaks Junior High. It has a dedicated entrance and everything it needs to be a junior high, including competition gyms, administrative areas, classrooms, and the like. If you look over to the east, on the opposite side of Grand Oaks High School, you can see the entrance to the Grand Oaks High School ninth grade, and you can see that it accommodates 1,200 seats. So we have 2,000 seats total. We have 800 junior high seats and 1,200 ninth grade seats. That's important, and I would make a special note, that's what we could afford in bond 2023 for this particular building. So if you look at it, that is, those are important numbers, and we'll talk about those numbers. We talked about it audit committee last week. It's also important to note and to visualize what the future of the Grand Oaks area looks like. So today, due to a statistical anomaly, we have exactly 1,024 students in eighth grade at York Junior High. You have exactly 1,024 students in ninth grade at Grand Oaks High School. So if you look at that, that's 1,024. If you look into the future, in the not-too-far distant future, in the year 32, 33, or maybe even I would slide it into 33, 34, Grand Oaks is looking at having around an neighborhood of 1,400 students per grade. Extrapolated out, using my East Texas math, that's going to give you around 5,600 students for a high school. So that is why this particular building is so important and so needed. The next thing I might emphasize, because if I was in the studio, studio audience or watching at home, I would say, well, I would have put the ninth grade campus closer to the high school, and that's a good point. But if you look at the junior high, the junior high has to be standalone for a number of years, and I have no long, we don't know how long that's going to be. So it needs everything it needs to succeed and standalone as work and work as an individual, independent campus. But one day, the projections are that this will be the ninth grade campus, and we will need a ninth grade campus for this entire building, and we will need another junior high in all likelihood. So if you extrapolate that out, that is why the gyms and that such is closer to the high school, because this would be an entire ninth grade at some point in the future, according to what it looks like in the crystal ball. So that's a few of the details. This, it is a two-story building. This is just the first floor. I just wanted to make a point of emphasis of the numbers and why they are what they are, and which side is what it is. So what are our objectives? The obvious ones is the first one, to create the initial attendance boundaries for Arnold Elementary K6, and I'll talk about that. While preserving some room for future growth. Those of you that live on the Board of Trustees, I say that every time I do a zoning process, but it's really true, and that is really the, really the hard part. So we know to maximize use of the 800 seats at the junior high level, and be strategic, because we know what's coming, because I'll show you some pictures in a second that I find at least mildly interesting. If you look here, we also need to relieve overcrowding at Clark, Cox, Bradley, York, and proactively address emerging capacity issues at Heinz Elementary. Heinz Elementary is right at capacity now, and if nothing worse to change, as of September 16th, at 7:20 PM, every student who moves into Grand Oaks will virtually go to Heinz Elementary, and we know that's not going to work. So, some things to remember. We would like, if possible, and this is going to be a challenge, the challenge of the junior high, is to open and have the junior high run as close to capacity as possible of 800 students, without going over process rights style, in a high stakes game of process rights, because the closer we can get it to 800, the more availability we're going to have for academic programs, co-curricular, fine arts, and athletic competitions. So I just want to put a note that'll be recorded for perpetuity on YouTube, that it may require periodic zoning readjustments. As more and more people come to Grand Oaks in the area that will potentially be served by whatever is adopted, is a zone for Grand Oaks Junior High, we're probably going to have to look at it. And so I already mentioned the schools there at that, where it says all the elementaries that we need to address. I would say Bradley Elementary is right at capacity. Bradley Elementary has quite a few special programs, and that necessitates the 10 portals that we have on site there. And also, one thing we want to consider, when you're a fast-growing suburban district like us, it is not unusual for students to be rezoned every year. We generally don't do that. We strive to not do that. We've done a great job of not doing that. I don't see that happening. But along the way, we want to consider that many, well, everybody that attends Heinz Elementary was rezoned there in the year 2023, which is basically two years ago. So, those are things that we want to consider. So here's where we are, September 16th. We are closer to October than we are August. So if you look at this screen, there's a lot of red, and in the seasonal note, it's kind of spooky, but I would, I would argue to not be, to not fret, there's, there are plans here. If you look at the high school, which is currently operating at 123%, help is coming in, in the form of the ninth grade campus. York Junior High, help is coming in, in the note of Grand Oaks Junior High. Clark and Cox, if we can do a successful job, and I know we will, with your help, we'll rezon Arnold K6, there will be help for Clark and Cox, intermediate schools. Then if you look at the elementary schools, you see where we are. I do want to make one special note about the elementary schools, and I want to make a note that Ford is unique, and well, not totally unique, but special, and that it has a foot in both the Grand Oaks feeder zone and the Oak Ridge High School feeder zone. Also, through bond 2023, we've added and are adding 100 seats and a gymnasium at Ford Elementary, and we have a local celebrity and principal of Ford Elementary somewhere behind me in the studio audience, I do not know where she is, that's Viviana Harris. I want to note her, because she's representing Ford tonight, and she's been very patient and a champion and a trooper throughout the summer, as we've added, done a year's worth of construction in two and a half months. So Viviana, where are you? Viviana? Viviana there, in the orange. So, thank you, Viviana. Thank you, you've been great. So, I will talk about what is going, we talked about what the challenge is for Grand Oaks Junior High rezoning. I want to talk about what the challenge is for Arnold Elementary K6 rezoning. And I can tell you, but it's so much easier just to show you. So, I'm going to take us into space, figuratively, not literally. We're going to look on Google Earth Pro, free of charge, it's a great thing to use. In Google Earth Pro, this is, go back to where you were in the year 2005. If you look here, you can see the familiar boot, ski boot, facing the southwest of Bender's Landing. You can see the cutouts of the roads, and you can see in the greater Grand Oaks region, that is mainly what you have. You have Bender's Landing right here. And then we're going to jump forward in time to 2012. So we go to 2012, you see some changes. You see some things are starting to look like what we know they look like now. In the south, you see Bender's Landing Estates. You can see spring trails. You can see right through here, you can see, you can see Legends Run, you can see the Legends Run Beak, you can see Creekside, and you can, at this time, right here in 2012, you're going to have Cox and York are going to be right there on Waterbin Cove. And then we're going to jump forward in time again to 2019, and notice we are matriculating to the east northeast. Now you have Woodson's Reserve. Woodson's Reserve is coming, we're moving east, we're advancing on the river. You can see Rotts Landing is now built out, and you can see Harmony is just about built out, and you can see spring trails. So I'm making a point as we keep going, and here we go, get ready, 2025. Now you look at 2025, and what you see, you see Woodson's Reserve continues to advance on the east northeast. You can see right here where we're going now, this little orange star, yes, that's orange, that is Heinz Elementary, and you keep going down Lexington. For those of you that live in Grand Oaks, Lexington's a really big deal to get around in Grand Oaks. You keep driving down Lexington, you make a turn on Townsend, and you end up at Arnold K6, right there where that pointer is. So if you look here, you can see in 2019, an important, an important part I didn't note was right here, this is Grand Oaks High School, which was kind of a big deal. It opened in 2018 with Dr. Chris Povich as the principal. So right here, a few things to note that I think are worthy. We'll continue moving east northeast. We're going to need to populate this area, schools from, coming from here. This is the west fork of the San Jacinto River. So this is the San Jacinto River. On the east side of this, we will not be zoning these kids. They live in New Caney ISD, and they would not be happy with us. So that is New Caney ISD on the east side of the river. This gives you another zoomed-in look of what we're dealing with, and you can see Broadway, Snyder, Cox and York, and the Waterbin Cove Triangle. You can see right here, this is important, this is Grand Oaks High School. Right here, the tip of this red arrow is where Grand Oaks Junior High and the Grand Oaks ninth grade campus will be. You can see down here on Trench, you can see Clark, you can see Heinz Elementary on Lexington. You can see Arnold Elementary as I advance here, east northeast on Lexington, I turn route on Townsend, and right here is Arnold Elementary. But alas, there's more that we need to mention that makes this a challenge, and that we own land on, well, we have land on Layaway, right here, that we retained from Toll Brothers, and Layaway's exactly what it is, and I think Mr. Foster would back me. So as we do, and we are strategic, and we do the zoning, it's not chess, as I said, it's 3D chess, and we're Spock and Kirk on the Enterprise playing 3D chess. So right here, thank you, somebody in the back. But if you look right here, we need to consider this, because we don't want to rezone kids any more often than we have to. So we have a future elementary site that we have the rights to purchase at a future date, so we will consider that at some time. Now, also very important, is if you look here, this is one of the most important things of the night. This is Townsend. So right here, this is Townsend, and there is currently, Townsend runs from right here, this is Waterbin Cove. It runs from Waterbin Cove, past Lexington, right down here to close to where you turn to go to Arnold. We are told in January 2027, it's going to extend right here, and Townsend's going to extend all the way and hook into Imperial Promenade. So that will give you really three ways to get to Arnold Elementary, from Imperial Promenade on the north side of 99, by coming down Waterbin Cove and hooking into Townsend, or going from Lexington to Townsend. So, I hope these pictures were of assistance. So this is a look back in time again, so this shows you Grand Oaks Elementary zones before Heinz Elementary and after. If you look on the left, you can see Snyder is very prominent in the yellow, and then you can see Snyder has a very reduced geographic footprint after Heinz Elementary. Depending upon what you approve, when Casey Arnold K6 comes in, I believe you will see Heinz follow a very similar pattern, and history will repeat itself. So those are things we're taking into consideration. I include this as a point of emphasis. There are many subdivisions in the Grand Oaks area, on both the south and the north side of 99. And so what we try to do, and what we, we mean what we say, we say what we mean, we do our, really our best to try to keep subdivisions to better, together the best we can. We also try to consider the last time a particular subdivision has been rezoned. We do our best to wait as long as possible while still achieving the goal that we need to achieve. The real challenge to go back here is getting people to populate the K6 Arnold Elementary, where they're coming quick in Woodsons, but most of the people still live over here. So this is the land that was available, this is why we have it, it's in a good location. It's just a real challenge for us in the short term, in the medium term, and we're going to do our best to make you proud. So we got a great committee, and they're already working hard. I always talk about the webpage, just so you could, you'd be the first, first people to know. The webpage goes live on Friday. If you want to go home and hit refresh Friday, it'll be up sometime on Friday on the webs, on the, on the internet. Note that you can submit feedback, you can create your own potential scenarios. Parents and guardians in the Grand Oaks feeder will all receive a letter explaining all of this at some time on Friday. Thank you, Communications and Mr. Renaud and Mr. Stewart. If you look here, just like always, you'll see all scenarios under consideration, scenarios no longer under consideration, upcoming events, and that's what we have, as we kick off and begin the zoning process of Casey Arnold K6 Elementary and Grand Oaks Junior High School.
Thank you, Mr. McCord.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. McCord. I heard a rumor, and I just want to know if it's true. Is today your Is today your birthday?
Today is my birthday.
Happy birthday, Mr. McCord.
Happy birthday, Mr. McCord.
I'll tell you, I'm 50, I'm 59, but I feel 58. I was waiting all day to use that if I was.
And you can say, and that was your gift.
Thank you. That was not a setup.
Happy birthday.
Any questions we can answer regarding the zoning? We'll get a lot of feedback and we'll share it all with you. Grand Oaks is really good at giving us feedback and we'll share it with you.
We are thankful for you and your committee. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, trustee Dawson, wait, Doug Duggan has a question.
Happy birthday.
Well, thank you.
Mr. McCord. So going back to Bradley, I believe that Bradley Elementary was at 97% capacity. What are the special programs taking up those 10 portables?
Well, Mr. Stewart, can you go to slide 41?
See, that's what we call, give us the minimum and when we ask the questions, you're ready to go.
Yeah, Mr. Stewart, I practiced this today. Forty-one, four. So a lot, all campuses have a lot of special programs. Some campuses have more than others depending upon the makeup of special populations that are a part of the geographical area which they have. So I, I thought if I looked at this, I'd say, wow, geez, you're just barely at capacity. You're right at capacity, but you have 10 portable buildings. Why is that, Mr. McCord? Because I looked at it like I didn't have anything to do with that. And we have pre-K, we have ECSE, life skills dyslexia. We have a lot going on and all the fourth grader out in the portables. So these are all considerations. We look at different areas to have pre-K and ECSE. And Dr. Winkler is a lot of help with that and she really guides it and I just try to assist.
Do we have that many pre-K classes at any other elementaries?
We do. And every campus doesn't necessarily have pre-K.
Right.
We try to put it where there's a locus and a need.
So not every elementary campus has pre-K?
Correct, correct. And so, and we can adjust pre-K from time to time if it makes sense. For example, we did some of that when we moved some pre-K students to Bush after we moved out Foster's Ridge. It was kind of like when I was a kid and you had a TV and there was a fine tuning, the horizontal and vertical tuning. It's kind of one of those things. So sometimes we can do some minor adjustments without having to move major subdivisions. So we try to do our best and look at the whole picture.
And that's why I asked. I just want to know what's taking up that, that extra capacity or adding to that.
It's a great question and I anticipated it. So I would have thought the same thing if I were you.
Appreciate, appreciate this slide. Thank you.
All right.
Now eat cake.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Andrew, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you so very much.
Have a good night. I'll be here all evening.
Dr. Landry, if you could give us the next item on the administration agenda item, which is the Senate Bill 10 update.
Thank you, Madam President. I was asked to, to give an update on where we are on Senate Bill 10 and the 10 Commandments posters. I can say that in compliance with state law and based on the guidance from the Attorney General, the school district has hung the 10 Commandments posters. They are in accordance with the details of that law and are in compliance, full compliance with the law at this time.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, we're on to item number six, teaching and learning. And I would like to say, Dr. Upshaw, are you in here tonight? There you are. Thank you. I know you put a lot of work into that presentation that we've asked to hold until Dr. Vincent's in. And I just wanted to recognize, we know that you, you probably busted your bottom getting that done and we appreciate it. But I think it's really important that we do this. Don't hit her. Geez. Okay, thank you anyway. But moving on, we're going to table that item until next month, just to let the, the public know. All right, item, agenda item number seven, planning and construction. The next item on the agenda is to consider and approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for Wilkinson, Patterson, Bosman, Stewart, Crier, Grangerland renovations project and authorize the interim superintendent to complete negotiations, negotiations and execute the contract documents. Mr. Foster.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for considering this, President Odenweller, members of the board and Dr. Landry. This is the next step in our 2023 bond referendum capital improvements plan. This is a critical infrastructure project, covers six campuses, Wilkinson, Patterson, Bosman, Stewart, Crier and Grangerland. So we're going to do any work at these campuses like replacing chillers and boilers and air handlers, doing freezer and cooler equipment upgrades, electrical service equipment, some roof replacement at one campus, safety and security upgrades, which is another line item from our 2023 bond referendum that goes district wide, as well as some general fund work for our district, existing district athletic facilities that, that, that were out with our, with our use for our students. So back in September of 2024, the board selected Nash Industries to be our construction manager at risk for this project. Together with our design team, VLK, Nash and our multiple district departments, we worked on our scope of work, went through our pricing efforts. We advertised a, a competitive bid, received those bids and negotiated a guaranteed maximum price of $15,742,601.13 for this work. The total budget allocated from the bond was $17,015,497, which pays for construction and the design and all the other soft costs related to this project. With an additional $1.5 million from the general fund, which is allocated specifically to the athletics improvements for those existing facilities. This time we're requesting your approval of the GMP and authorization to complete the negotiations and execute the documents.
Any questions or discussion?
Can you repeat that last part about the 1.5 million from the general fund?
Yes, ma'am. It's an annual general fund allocation for the athletic improvements, which these are facilities that were out much sooner than bond money would allow. I mean, so it doesn't make sense to borrow money to make these improvements. So it's something we work with Ms. Garza's office annually to allocate in the, in the general fund budget for this work.
For allocated for just these?
Specifically for athletic facilities. We work with our district athletic director to make sure we put the money where things are needed. So we're not repairing something we're usually right at or just beyond the, the wear out point when we're replacing tracks or tennis court services, gym floors or the synthetic turf at the stadiums.
Thank you. It's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nothing else, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, that's seven zero. The motion passes. And thank you again, sir.
No problem. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Portia, that was May and Semler. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is to consider and approve ordering, approve order authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of CAGRO ISD Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds, Series 202026. Yes, I was just about to say that does not roll off the tongue.
All right. Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board and Dr. Landry. This evening we have two parameter orders for your consideration. Item 8B on the agenda is for a refunding opportunity on existing bonds in Series 2016 and 16A. And item 8A on the agenda is a new money transaction representing the third sale from our 2023 bond program. Mr. John Robach, the district's financial advisor, is here along with Mr. Marcus Dietz, the district's bond counsel. They're both here to answer any questions that you may have. I'm going to introduce Mr. John Robach. He's going to share the schedule of events for both transactions and then I will return and ask for your consideration for, for approval.
Good evening, President of the Board, members of the board, Dr. Landry. John Robach, BOK Financial Securities. Thanks for having me tonight. It's this time of year again, we do have a refunding opportunity like Ms. Garza's mentioned. We're going to take items 8A and B together and I'm going to confuse you by doing 8B first because we like to talk about the refunding savings first before we talk about the new money bond issue. On the first page of the presentation, over there, sorry. Should look for that first. We have an overview of the bond mark. This is a bond buyer index. This is a weekly average of municipal bond rates across the country. It's just, it's a Dow Jones of the, of the municipal market. It just kind of gives a snapshot of where we stand. This was done about two weeks ago where the rate was a 5.25%, which looks hides above the average, is below the historical high. We've actually come down a lot since then. In fact, the current rate right now is a 4.94%. We're seeing rates move lower as the Fed's scheduled meet tomorrow. There's indications that it's probably going to do a 25 to 50 basis point cut in the Fed funds rate, which will bring interest rates lower, which will benefit our savings when we go out to sell refunding bonds to refund existing bonds. Kind of give you a history, since 2014, the district's done 11 refunding bond issues that have saved over $138.9 million in savings, interest cost savings for the district. We've also prepaid bonds three separate times and generated about $10.4 million in savings. So a total of about 149, uh, 149 million, excuse me, in savings since 2014. And programs that the district authorized and move forward with to save taxpayers money by lower interest costs on the bonds. The next page is a summary of the callable bonds outstanding. This is a list of all the debts obligations the district has outstanding currently. The first five bond issues are currently callable. We're going to be callable within 90 days of the call dates by the time we do the refunding. Some of these bonds have a low interest rate, so we are not going to refund them at this time. The ones that have a higher interest rate, we are going to look to refund to generate interest cost savings for, for the district. And those include the 2016 unlimited tax school building and refunding bonds and the 2016 A unlimited tax school building refunding bonds. And those are shown on this page, shows the principal amount of each year of the 2016 and 2016A bonds. And also the interest rate on the far right. You'll notice most of these rates are at 5%. We have a couple of 3% but they're very early in the maturity structure, so we can generate savings by putting those into the mix. And then 4%, they're on the 32 to 36 on the 2016A bonds. But each one of these on a maturity by maturity generates savings for the district. We, we did not include any of them that have low coupons, 3% because they do not generate savings at this point. We are asking you to approve a parameter though that includes more than just this bond. I think it's about $260 million, 245, is that right? 260? Yeah, 260 million. We're asking for authorization to refund up to that amount. Should rates come down even lower, we can put those into the mix and generate savings. So this is what saves money right now. And this is what it looks like on a current market scale. On the far left, it's the current district's debt service requirements. And then those bonds we're talking about refunding, they're on the third column. And then the estimated principal interest on the new refunding bonds we'd be issuing. And then the far right, there's estimated debt service savings generated on these bond issues, which is about $905,000 per year for the next 12 years, which is about $10.8 million, which is a 5.3% PV savings. Just kind of give you a background, anything over 3% is good. 5% is a no brainer, especially in a current refunding. So we recommend going forward with a 5% PV savings on these bonds. And then to accomplish this, we have a scheduled events. Now we're here tonight to ask for you to approve the parameter order that Mr. Dietz and his team put together. We'll submit an application for the permit school fund guarantee, which allows us to sell the bonds with a AAA rating, which is highest rating you possibly have. We'll work on the offering document, which we've actually already started on. It looks something like this. It's pretty thick. It's got all the information about the district, about the finances, about the enrollment, and then also state laws on, and the protections for the bondholders, the protections for the district when buying the bonds. We'll work on that, get ratings from the rating companies. And then we'll sell the bonds on or around October 22nd and close on November 20th. On October 22nd, those bonds will be locked in, approved, and that's when the savings will be realized. And the other bonds will be no longer outstanding once we close the bonds on the 20th of November. And that is item B. I'm happy to answer questions you have on the refunding before I get to the new money piece, which is item A.
Any questions?
Just really quickly, you mentioned our rating as a AAA. Is it, that particular sale is a AAA or what does that do for our rating?
Okay, so your, your underlying rating is actually AA1, AA+, which is one notch AAA, which is very good. You're a growing district. The rating comes, I can give you AAA right now. If you slow down your growth, maybe you will, but then it's not going to benefit us to that point.
Yes, I just wanted that mentioned. Thank you. Appreciate you.
You're welcome. Other questions? Okay. And then if, we'll go to the, actually item A, which is the new money portion. As Ms. Garza mentioned, this is the third sale from the 23 authorization. We are looking to sell $445 million in bonds. We're asking to approve a parameter not to exceed that amount. And this will be for some of those projects we talked about earlier, other earlier agenda items. And, let me see, I'm on the wrong page here. I apologize. Yep. So you'll see there on the far left is your current debt service requirements. And that actually includes the refunding results, proposed refunding results. And then the principal interest in the far right's resulting debt service requirements after both issuances. We will sell these in 2026, like we have in the last three bond, the last two bond issues. Again, we're starting to, we'll ask you to approve the primary order tonight and we'll do the PSF application again tomorrow. Start with the offering document later in November, have the rating calls and then sell the bonds the first week of January, January 7th. And then close about 30 days later, February 3rd, which, at which point you'll receive refunds. And if you have any questions, I have to answer questions about this issue also.
Just one quick question. Is this going to be our final sale or how many more do we have?
One more.
One more after this one. Okay. And when is that one going to, like, how often do you time these?
A year.
Ever, okay.
By January of next, the following year, 27.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Garza, do you want us to take the vote for A and then B or B then A?
You can do them in order as they are on the agenda.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I followed y'all's order, so. All right, so seeing no further discussion, do I have a motion to accept the item that as presented for item A on our agenda?
Second.
All right, so we have trustee Duggan Nelson as the second. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, that's seven. All opposed is zero. So the motion passes with a vote of seven zero. Moving on to item B on the agenda as described earlier, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I'll do Dawson and Semler. All in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, that is seven with zero opposed. The motion carries seven zero. Moving on to the next item. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item C under finance. To receive information regarding district legal expenses. Ms. Garza, thank you so much for your diligent work on this. I know you've been working with me since July and Dr. Landry since July on this. And having these numbers gives the board a clearer, more comprehensive picture as we evaluate our options for legal representation. So please proceed.
Absolutely. Well, good evening again, President Odenweller, members of the board and Dr. Landry. I'm here to, this evening to provide you with a brief update of legal expenses for the district. There's really two purposes for our presentation this evening. First one is to provide transparency to our community about what the district is spending on legal expenses. And then as President Odenweller mentioned, to equip you with information as you make decisions about legal representation going forward for the district. So this was our prior legal structure in our legal office prior to the change that was recently made to local board policy BDD. The board policy previously stated that we had to have an in-house, on-staff general counsel. And with the recent retirement of Mrs. Galatas and our inability to find a suitable replacement, it has led us to look at different options in terms of legal representation for the district. So a change was made to that board policy to allow us the flexibility to either have an in-house general counsel or to seek outside general counsel. So in our previous structure, we had our in-house legal general counsel. We had a legal, we have a legal assistant and then an administrative assistant and then hearing officers. So this slide, there's a lot of information on here, but this is a representation of the three-year average of annual legal expenditures disaggregated by the categories that you see on the screen. These totals represent approximate expenditures in each of the categories. We'll start on the left-hand side of this slide. General counsel total compensation for our previous in-house general counsel, this would be salary and benefits in total, 234,000. Non-litigation services in our general category would be employment matters, contract review, document review, policy review. Those are the types of items that would be in that category. Non-litigation services for special education would be legal representation at an ARD meeting, document review, just conversations with outside counsel regarding special ed matters. And then due process hearings, administrative and judicial litigation services, 175,000. This is an area that fluctuates tremendously year to year depending on, on the situation. And then $32,000 in litigation for TASV for legal liability claims that fall below the deductible where we're paying for litigation on behalf of those claims. And now that, moving to the right-hand side of the screen, our non-litigation services for real property. This is outside legal counsel that is related to the acquisition of land, easement issues and other real property matters, primarily related to the bond program. And then support staff compensation, that would be salary and benefits for our legal assistant and then our admin assistant in the legal office. Our hearing officers primarily deal with complaints and ethics point issues. I would say on average, they, they cover about 40 of these a year and they can range anywhere from a two-hour to a 25-hours depending on the complexity of the complaint. And to note, these are complaints that at the end of the day are resolved and don't come to the board. So there is value in, in them being able to handle these complaints prior to them escalating to a level two or a level three. And I would mention, these are complaints that were assigned to these hearing officers. There are many other complaints that come across the district that are handled at the, at the principal level or at other levels within the district. So these are complaints that were assigned to these specific hearing officers. So these are complaints that were assigned to these specific hearing officers that I'm speaking about. And then other costs, that's just required record retention is really the largest category in this last item here. And then supplies and materials, miscellaneous training and memberships. So a total annual average legal expenditures in its entirety of just over $1.1 million for the district. So if we look at what is potentially available in moving to a different legal structure in terms of outside counsel, I have taken the items on the left-hand side of the previous chart, removing the TASB litigation, and kind of grouped them into what we would call non-litigation services. A potential funding of around $384,000. And then those fluctuating ones regarding due process hearings, administrative and judicial litigation of about $175,000. So I can answer any questions that you have regarding legal expenses, or I will do my best.
Hi, I know we talked a lot, and I sadly have one more question for you. The litigation for TASB, is that the risk pool insurance policy?
Yes, it is.
So it wasn't $100,000 every year?
That, no. That is, that is all we have paid, on average, the last three years for legal liability claims. So we have not had any claims, with the exception of the one special ed claim. It was not paid directly to TASB. By the time it reached TASB, in terms of them actually filing and acting on the claim, they gave us credit for what we had paid already towards the claim. So it's actually in that category of $175,000. So it's just a shift of where it ended up expense-wise for us as a district. So instead of them charging us the deductible, they just gave us credit for what we had already paid towards the claim, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to the slide before, please?
Yes.
All right, under the real estate property, non-litigation services of $90,000, I understand that there are types of services needed in that category. Can you tell me, I know it's approximately, or it's $90,000 a year to this law firm, can you tell me how many transactions they approve or review for us?
I might need Mr. Foster to help me with that.
I'm sorry, thank you.
And that $90,000 is an average over the last three years?
So are you asking the total number of transactions or total number of?
Well, the average is $90,000 a year is what we're paying for these services. Can you tell me approximately how many transactions that is? How many contracts, how many reviews that is per year, on average?
So, yeah, this is going to be a educated guess, because I wasn't prepared for that level of detail. But for every piece of land we bought for every new campus for each part of the bond program, and then some pieces of land, like for the ag centers, or even some of the things that we're going to discuss later, those are, they range widely. But generally speaking, outside counsel is working on two to three different land deals at any one time, and it just kind of cycles. So as one closes, we're usually bringing another one, another one on.
So is that approximately two to three a year? Or is that, I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is how much is it costing us approximately?
So in the last three years, it's been higher because of a larger amount of new schools being built and new land that needs for the facilities we're putting in. So over time, it probably doesn't average that many. But I've been, you know, involved in land transactions for my entire career here, and in the last three, four, or five years, it has taken a sharp increase, which, you know, if you asked me how much it was, I would have estimated higher than $90,000, average over the last three years, because we wear, Brett Beatty is the gentleman's name, we wear him out on all kinds of transactions. Some come all the way through to you, to the board, some don't make it to the board. But he helps us identify areas of risk that, and keeps us local, I mean, because the local land issues are really what he spends most of his time involved in.
Would you please get back with us on that? The trustee, you can send it to all of us, or through Dr. Landry, or Karen, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Garza, or however, somehow that we get that information, so we can just have an idea of what it costs us per transaction.
Real quick, before you move on, I did have a question about that as well. So the non-litigation services, just to be clear, is for legal opinions on transactions and not broker's fees, correct?
Yeah, so relative to real property transactions, they are his legal representation on contracts themselves. Many times, we're generating those contracts to our benefit, rather than relying on somebody else generating those, generating that contract to review, so to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, and my next question, I believe, will go to Ms. Garza, I think. You were saying, are the two hearing officers that are on salary that do hear the cases that they hear, because there are other people covering some others? But about how many hours a week are they working? They're two part-time hearing officers, correct?
Yes, I can say they are less than 50% in terms of FTE. But I guess I don't know for sure exactly how many hours, but they are less than 50%. I can say that with confidence.
So two part-time hearing officers for almost $200,000?
Yes.
Would it be, I mean, because you do this quite often, it seems that it might be more fiscally prudent for us to do it on a contract basis than for us to do someone that's just on salary on a retention, that we may or may not use them on a consistent basis a certain amount?
That is certainly an option, and I will say that these two individuals come with a ton of experience.
Yes, they do.
And that's what helps them mitigate a lot of these complaints that come to them, because they have been in the educational world for a long time and served in many roles, so that does serve well throughout that process, in terms of the experience.
I just meant fiscally prudent for us. I'm not necessarily saying we're not using them. I do know their backgrounds, I know who they are and so forth. I'm just trying to figure out financially, are we, are we being fiscally prudent with the money per transa, or per case or hearing that they're doing? And so that's why I was wondering if it wouldn't be more prudent for us financially. I think it's something we should consider and look at that, to determine if that's, if we're being fiscally prudent with those funds.
Right, and I guess one of the things to consider, if you're, if you're talking about contracting that out, you're going to possibly bring someone in that doesn't know?
I meant, it could be them. I'm not even saying it wouldn't necessarily be them, I'm just saying versus keeping them on salary if we were to do it on a transac, like a contract per hearing-type project versus just that they're always on salary, regardless of how many hearings or whatever.
Really, I think primarily they're coming in when there's stuff to do. Like, they're not just coming in for a set number of hours, they're here because there is stuff on their plate to take care of, so they're paid by the hour, so we don't, they don't have a set salary. They have a set hourly rate, but we pay them by the hour.
So they are essentially, you would say, contract, but they only come in when they're are cases to work.
Oh, that's good to know.
Okay, that was, that's new information, because I was asking on that, and it was, I kept being told salary, so now that's a totally different situation.
Well, I guess the term salary can be used loosely, but yes, they are, they are on an hourly rate.
But that makes a difference.
They clock in and out, just like our paraprofessionals do, because we track their time by the hour.
Okay, thank you. That is, that's a big piece of information there, that was a big shift. Any other discussion or questions?
Well, I was just kind of wondering, how many, like, grievances is that, that the hearing officers are hearing to get to that amount between them?
Well, I called both of them and asked them, and they said about 40 combined between the two of them, but like I mentioned, they can take anywhere from two hours, it might be a quick one, or some of them are much more extensive based on the circumstances and can be upwards of 25 hours. So that's kind of the range that I got from them.
Did you say 40 per year total?
Yes.
Between the two of them, so 28 approximately? Thank you.
And they are in our offices. If we contracted this out, would, like, hearing officers come here?
On average, that's about $5,000, but per, you know, of the 40 hearings. But it's something we, I think, I think it would just be prudent of us to do research to find out.
I mean, they're clocking in and out, so.
Her question was, would they be here on site?
Oh, if we were contracting them out, someone else other than the two that are, okay, that's what I, okay, that's what I thought. I don't know, I think it's something, it's something we're going to have to either look at, decide to look at and evaluate, would be my, my opinion. Is that what you're?
Yes, yeah, I was just curious if we kept them here.
I can assure you, Ms. Garza will tell you, I've asked a ton of questions on it, so I think that's, I mean, I've asked the same question, so.
Because it, it looks like it's, you know, a savings of $150,000, but if we're bringing somebody in and they're traveling back and forth, I don't know that that would be a realized savings.
I don't know, that's why I was saying it would be something we'd have to look at if we, if that's a direction the board wanted to consider.
Okay.
I just want to also say, it seems that this is a very delicate situation that we're talking about as well. 40 times a year, very delicate. Am I right about that?
You mean the cases themselves? Yes, they can be, yes. So, you know, the, there's some confidentiality issues that are, that are at play, absolutely.
And we're happy with the results that?
Oh, most definitely so. I mean, they are consistent professionals, they handle everything very, very well, which is why you see such a low number that do reach the Level 3 here at the DIAS.
Just something to consider.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions on that, trustees? All right, so then, I believe that brings us up to item D. Next is the consideration and possible action on engaging a law firm to serve as general counsel to the board and district. Tonight, we will consider whether retaining a law firm as general counsel will provide the consistent, timely, and cost-effective legal support our district needs. Ms. Garza, or Ms., okay, I'm not sure which way we're going, so we'll go with this. All right, Ms. Ballou.
Hello, everybody. It's such an honor to be here, and thank you for the wonderful opportunity. We've been working with your school district for about a month and a half now, under a temporary contract, so for under $50,000. So I just, before you reviewed the contract and I reviewed the contract provisions, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what we've been up to as a law firm in the district. Just a reminder, I'm kind of the face. One of the big things that I do is liaison with, with the board and with the superintendent, so that's one of my key jobs. Kevin, the wonderful other partner that was here, also has been working and liaising a ton with, for example, your special education department. And behind us are a whole set of additional staff that are working on all of the things that I'm about to talk to you about, but I just wanted to remind you a little bit about who we were and kind of who the lead faces that are most liaising with the board and with the superintendent. So some of the advantages of a flat fee contract with any law firm, it wouldn't just be ours, are, but we try to do a great job at it, are you get, you're getting 24/7 access to legal experts. It's an entire legal team of professionals, so we have people that just focus on special needs. We have a team that's now working, your wonderful contracting staff is here, we have a team that's working with your contracting, your bond, and your construction staff. We have individuals that are working just on public information requests. And then, of course, I'm working with you all on trying to help facilitate you guys having the policies in place that you want. It's a flat fee, so it's unlimited services. Everybody can call us and use us as much as they want, any of the professionals, and the fee is just the same, no matter what. So it's kind of a unlimited use and services, which is nice. We try to be extraordinarily customer-focused. We've put a lot of routines in place to make sure that we're highly responsive to everything that you need. We're trying to respond to, for example, requests from staff within 24 to 36 hours, and that's always our aim, is to not have things sitting for a long period of time. Of course, the complexity of a particular contract or issue can take more or less time, but we have definitely tried to work it out, so we're building those relationship, relationship with the staff and carefully tracking and monitoring things to get done. Because of this, I think we've reduced some staff burdens. I know, for example, with the public information requests, we are now handling all public information requests for your, your school district. So as a result of that, that's freed up some of your staff to be able to do other things that they were currently having to spend time responding to public information requests. And the reason we're able to do that is because we have a team of people that just do that work. They are really, really quick with it, we can redact documents, we can get out emails that are, you know, quick and professional to people, and so it just reduces, you know, those burdens. And then the contract's very low risk, because you can terminate it at any time for any reason. So if we're not performing or doing a good job, or you want to, for example, put out a posting to see if a general counsel's available locally, you can do that at any time, and you can terminate the contract with no ongoing obligation. And we also take pride in that, because we want to work really, really hard, and we know that at any time, we could be terminated, so that puts a lot of onus on us to always do really good work for anybody that we're working for. We have a lot of school districts right now that we're providing these services for, so that's also allowed us to build out that, that team as a firm to support districts. If you will remember, a wonderful CFO mentioned that the current ISD Conroe three-year average expense is $384,000. If you divide that by 12, that comes out to $32,000 per month. Our proposal is to do it for $30,000 per month, so that would be about $25,000 in savings per year, if you went with our last firm compared to your, your current averages. I told, I told all of you, or some of you, as I met with you, that we would definitely try to meet or exceed what you are currently spending, and we're planning capable and ready to do that. The other part that would not be part of that flat fee would be those ongoing litigation costs, which you currently are doing, spending about $175,000 on. Again, though, it really varies year to year, litigation, you know, comes up, some years you have more litigation than others. But I will tell you that we already have tried to put in place for the district ways to reduce your litigation exposure. If Kevin were here, he would tell you that he is on the phone with your special ed superintendent almost, almost all day, every day, and that is in a large part so that we can reduce the number of special education cases that are escalating to a litigation situation. Also, we are very carefully tracking all of your litigation and trying to see what we can do to contain it, reduce your risks. And so those are some of the things we're doing. Also, because you have unlimited access to a huge team of professionals at all time, that reduced risks, because you, you're not having to wait, you know, to get answers. I'll admit, I don't know everything about, for example, special education, but Kevin and other people in my office do, and so they're just focused on that. And so they're able to answer questions really rapidly in their area. So those are just some of the things that we try to do to really reduce this litigation exposure. But again, litigation's, you know, when it happens, it can be an expensive endeavor. You can just do your best to try to represent your client and, and your team the best that you can. Okay, so I'll just let you know some of the things that we think that we've helped, help you guys solve or really work on successfully as a district. We've worked on helping you with about 25 board policies to date. I think 20 of them are on the agenda tonight. We've really worked to streamline your public information services. Our firm now handles all public information requests. We've worked to work with you guys, really to strengthen your agenda, provide advice that I think is, is important. I'm going to give you just, you know, one, one bit of advice that I really appreciated tonight. I told Karen and a couple other folks, it's really important that you guys hear from your bond counsel on how much money you're saving and what they're doing. And previously, some of that had been put on the consent agenda, but you have a enormous fiduciary responsibility, and you have billions of dollars of bonds out there, and so we said, we thought it would be appropriate if you talked to your bond counsel a little bit more in these meetings. And so I know it takes that a little bit more time, but that's, that's some of the advice that we're trying to provide to protect you. We've been very focused, like I said, on working on your special education and trying to work on mitigating and de-escalating special education issues. We've reviewed all of your handbooks, I think your employee handbook, your student handbook. We are now in the process of reviewing your construction contracts, so that going forward, those are going to be as strong, and we're going to have as many protections in them as we can negotiate. There's always, you know, cost benefits to some of this stuff. We've been trying to do a really good job liaising and trying to solve issues as they come up between the board and the district. So, you know, every once in a while, there's a little, you know, who's on first base, who's doing what, and we're trying to make sure that we present what the district needs to you, and conversely, what you need, what you guys need or expect from the district, we're also trying to talk to them about. We're handling probably many more than this, but at least probably 10 administrator questions daily are coming in from all areas. And we've worked just really, really hard to develop relationships across all of your, your cabinet. And then the final thing that we've been supporting a little bit with is potentially getting ready to do something, which I know you guys are thinking about, which is, how do you improve financial efficiency and do some efficiency audits? I, of course, you know, for three years under Commissioner Marath, was the head of the $60 billion wonderful public education finance system, and so you're, I'm bringing all that expertise, and so is Kevin, and that, that can't be undersold as a skill that we bring in trying to help you guys as you're trying to do the good job you are for your district in holding down costs. in trying to help you guys as you're trying to do the good job you are for your district and holding down costs. So, um, with that, just any questions? I think the goal is just, um, to make sure you guys, um, this, the contract is laid out such that you, we, we charge you thirty thousand per month in a flat fee, and then the additional amounts would come up as we had the, um, litigation expenses. And we think the amount would, we, we, we would be in that event, charging you for litigation would be comparable, um, you know, to any other law firm that would be providing you the services. So, are there any, any questions at all?
I, I just would like to say, um, I have really appreciated the, uh, ability to work. Our, our team, it, that we've had in place over th- from the summer through to now, um, has been an amazing working collaborative environment and, uh, and system, working with you, with Dr. Landry, with the finance department and all the other areas I know you're covering, especially because of all of the policies and the, the handbooks and so on and so forth. There've been questions coming from the, the administrative staff that then have to then go down to their schools that they're overseeing. And it has really worked out well. Um, people have been able to trust and, and be, um, just a much better collaborative environment. So, thank you very much for that. Um, I also know that there's been a lot of gathering of information that we've had to get. And so, I appreciate that and everyone else. Ms. Williams, um, Janet Williams in the office has had a lot on her shoulders in helping all of us try to gather information, and I just greatly appreciate her as well. We're blessed to have an administration that leans into it, all these things with openness and the collaborative process, and we're grateful for the teamwork that's been brought forward out of all of this process, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will really say that one thing that we really value is just building relationships with everybody on your team and trusting relationships. And, um, I think that that's, that's working out really well. I think that we have, um, some good rapport built with ev- with everybody and we're going to continue to build on that. I always tell everybody, though, you don't build Rome in a day, so we're going to slowly try to put in as many processes and procedures so that you have a lasting legacy of success no matter who you choose as your, your legal counsel.
Anyone else?
I g- I just have a couple of questions. So, special education, um, I know that that's a hot topic and, and I appreciate, um, the shift that we're making. I genuinely appreciate the shift that we're making. Um, going forward, who will be the, the, the point person for special education? Because you have a special education expert or experts?
So, Kevin, um, our, the founder of our law firm, um, he's, he's, he does a ton of special education work. We also have two other experts that handle special education on staff. One of those experts, and I, I can provide you some more information about her, but, um, she actually worked for, I think, a group called Disability Advocates for about ten years. So, she really comes from the, um, perspective of individuals who have supported and who have helped advocate for special education students. Her name is Lindsay. Um, and one of the things that I really appreciate about her is she does incredible staff trainings. So, something that she does so good, and I've seen her do these trainings, and she's really cute and funny and, uh, not as serious as I am, but she, um, she's very good at talking to principals about the real world issues that come up, um, when they're trying to work through special education issues. She's also great at talking about the real scenarios that happen in ARD meetings and how do we, how are we successful out of an ARD meeting? So, that's just one of the, the talents that she brings to the firm, yeah.
Okay, good to know that. Um, another concern that I had, I think that I talked to you about was, you know, thirty thousand flat fee, we may be the winners on that. Because we may go way above and beyond the thirty thousand available hours. And so, a concern I had was, you know, if, if that doesn't weigh out for you and your firm, um, do we still get the same level of service? And, and you did assure that absolutely that, that would be the case.
Well, the thing is, because you can terminate the contract at any time and for any reason with no liability, if we for any reason are not providing the services that you want, then, you know, like, so if, if you felt like you were asking for a lot and we just weren't providing it, then you can always look for alternative.
And just to clarify, you're providing a lot.
The other thing, though, is, um, we are going to keep track and you guys are, you know, you'll get our bill. And we, we bill, I think, by every six or ten minutes, you're seeing those bills come through. So, we'll know exactly at the end of this year how many, um, hours we've spent. I'll also say that right now, we are a little bit in a ramp-up stage. Um, you know, for example, you guys are working on a lot of, of policy issues, right? So, we're spending a lot of time with that. But once you get those policies put into place, um, things go smoother and there's less hours. Um, also, once, you know, now that we're working through a bunch of public information processes, things go smoother and there's less hours. But we'll be tracking all of that. And then, you know, if we come to the table a year from now and we're thinking, hey, this is, uh, you know, we need, we want to talk to you guys about what's appropriate, given the services we're providing, you know, we can always, we can always do that. And you'll, and you'll have, we'll all have really clear insight into what is happening, not just at the beginning where we have a lot of work, but as things smooth out over a, a six or eight-month period.
And, and just the last thing, uh, point is, I assume that this is a big shift, right, for our district? Because we've done it one way for three decades.
Twenty-six years.
Yeah, twenty-six years. And so, I assume, you know, God bless our cabinet because they're probably the most change-wary out of everybody. In the past four months, they've had a lot of change. Think we're getting close to the end of change, though. Um, and so, I assume that Dr. Vincent will come in and kind of have some thought processes on all of that. But, um, it is just something that, for me, as a board member, is top of mind, is how much change, um, this new process gives to the cabinet and really the entire district employees. So, um, I assume that, um, Dr. Landry, Dr. Vincent, you guys will be on top of that and working through good structures and systems in place so that everybody knows who they go to and how that funnels out and the response time is, is timely.
Absolutely, and, uh, Dr. Vincent and I have already talked about, you know, one of the very first, uh, priorities is the, the legal office and its functionality, um, its staffing and, uh, and the procedures that, uh, that we have worked under for so long. Um, they can't function that way anymore because of the dynamic change. Um, so, we will be looking at some, um, getting some priorities in place for that office so it runs smoothly, as smoothly as possible.
And the benefit on that is that, Doctor, I did check with Dr. Vincent, this is how he's operated all along, um, is an outside GC. And so, that, that's a benefit to us to have leadership that's experienced this for a long time. So, that, that, and that comes to y'all as well as experi- for him to have that experience.
I'll also say that we will, and we already have been, doing our absolute best to fit into your processes and the way that you want things to work, and that will be exactly what I will, um, do for him. And I'm very cognizant of, the general counsel plays a role and we don't get out of that lane. You know, there's a role for your, your, everybody's role has to be understood and defined. And we'll, we'll do certain work, but we're not going to do other work, um, you know, that Dr. Vincent doesn't want us involved in or is not necessary for us to be involved in. Um, so, we want to be a, a core member of the team and helpful, but we want, you know, whatever he lays out for us is the most appropriate way to interact or work with the district is how we're going to do it.
Ms. Ballou, I have a quick question. How will you communicate your office hours and availability to staff members and?
Right now, I'm coming in, um, all day or, or a big part of the day on any board meeting day. We have been discussing if I need to be here, um, more time. So, that was something that I really want to discuss with, um, your new superintendent. I will say that because of, you know, the way communication works now, we, we, we are servicing districts all over the state and we don't seem to have a lot of problems, um, with not being physically, um, present. Now, with that, we have to offer twenty-four-hour access, and I think that most of you have even experienced with me. If you call or email, I will probably get back to you relatively quick, like, almost as soon as I can. You know, I have other things going on, but as soon as I can. And if you even, you know, if you're not available, I will keep calling you until I, until I can get you on the phone. Um, so, we are going to do everything that we can to make sure that that's a really seamless, um, situation. You know, but I, I would totally concede that, yeah. Um, you know, having, having a general counsel right here where you can pop in and out of probably is a little, you know, bit easier from that respect. But, you know, I mentioned some of the trade-offs are, if you have one general counsel, that's one person. Whereas right now, and I'm not, I, you know, I'm, I'm the face for you guys, but I'm telling you, uh, Oscar's working with your contracts team, Kevin's working with your sped department, Tanya's working, um, with your PIR department. And there's other people too, in the firm that are constantly working on different things. So, you're getting, that, you're getting that, uh, hands-on support with experts in the areas that you need, I would say.
I had, uh, I wanted to go back to the fact that you were talking about the trainings. Um, I think trainings are critical. There are a number, and it's not just in sped, but it's in a variety of different areas. And I think, um, uh, we actually had a conversation, Dr. Landry and I, regarding even just legislative updates and information that was supposed to be, go from principals down to their staff. That's not their area of, and they're doing the best they can to communicate and give information and direction. And I think that by having better trainings, we're also going to save money. Because it's going to prevent other issues, even, even in just better understanding. It's going to prevent, um, it's going to help with culture on campuses because people are going to understand things better and not be feeling like they're anxious over things or floundering. It's going to help with that they don't, um, handle a situation inaccurately because they thought they understood something. I just think with a better standardized training system on our campuses and, and within our departments and so forth, I think we will, we'll see recognizable change and improvement, um, and savings.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just mention, just with me, um, I'm a board-certified trainer three different ways with the Texas Education Agency. I went to Rice University to learn how to, um, really help adult leaders be successful. Um, when I had my own consulting company before coming to the law firm, I trained thousands of teachers every summer. Um, I trained boards, principals, teachers, and that's just me. There are four other of me and my law firm who, um, primarily, some of them just work and train, um, at all levels on all, um, issues. But one thing that, and you'll, if you guys do a team-of-eight training with me, what you're going to find is we're not sit and get. And that's even what I was talking about with that ARD. Um, sometimes I go into training sessions and it's a lot of kind of slides and you're just sitting there and it's a lot of information. We really try to think about what do teachers, principals, superintendents practically need to be successful? And what are the practical issues that are coming up in your, in your real life? And do a lot of scenarios and, and thinking through things like that. So, anyway, but one of my, one of my favorite things to do is, is provide trainings. I used to love working with teachers when I did my institutes all over the state.
Any other questions or discussion? Dr. Landry, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I was going to turn to Ms. Ballou. Do you have anything to add? Yes, Ms. Garza, are, did you have anything you needed to add or are we good to call a vote?
We're good.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, well, if there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to engage O'Handeland, Damarith and Castillo to serve, or Castillo, depending on how you say it, to serve as general counsel for Conroe ISD?
So moved, second.
Thank you, trustees Nelson and Horton. All in favor, show by the uplift of hands. And the vote is unanimous, seven-zero, and the motion carries.
Yay.
Welcome to the team.
All right, um, it's been two and a half hours. I'd like to take ten minutes if we could. Um, is, is that enough for what you need to do? Okay, we're going to take ten-minute break for, um, the room, and I have to take care of some other legal things. Thank you. So sorry, the time is eight-twenty-four. All right. The time is eight-forty-two and we're back in session. Where did I leave my pen? Sorry. Um, all right, we're on to our next agenda item, set, item eight. Uh, the board will consider and take action on each of the proposed policies, BF local through GKD A local, one at a time. This is the third reading of several of them. Since prior readings, several updates reflected, uh, recent legislative changes. Trustees have had full access to the policy services team for questions. Our interim general counsel and now our counsel, GC, provided small group legal briefings. And Dr. Landry was available as well for any clarifications needing. And I'd like to just thank, um, all of the trustees for ta- making every effort to get through everything and be prepared on this because I know it was a lot, but mo- like I said, most of the updates came through legislative changes. Um, and from what I understand, we're going to be one of the, the first to actually get our policies updated in the state of Texas. So, I'm pretty proud of that. Um, moving on, uh, thank you to our staff and the council for that support. To keep us moving efficiently, I will begin by confirming, uh, for the record, Dr. Landry, have you and your team evaluated the impact of the policies presented here today and discussed them with the GC? Or as needed and what they would look like, uh, to your team?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Um, I know that I've checked with Dr. Vincent and he has indicated that these align with the policies that he'd like to see and he's supportive of them as well. Ms. Ballou, do these policies and their revisions comply with Texas law and are, are they legally sound?
Yes, they are.
Thank you very much. With that stated, a quick procedural reminder to the trustees that if a policy comes up that you would like to make an amendment to, you need to make a motion and read the exact amendment language into the record. The motion to amend requires a second. We will vote on the amendment first. If it passes, the main motion will reflect the amended language. If it fails, we will proceed with the language as posted in the board book policy. We'll begin with policy BF. All right, is there, um, any discussion for board policy BF?
I just have a quick question. Um, it removes the line that says each policy code, the legally referenced policy and the board adopted local policy must be read together to further full understanding of the topic. Is there a reason why we're removing that line, um, for the legal reference?
Do you want me to respond?
Yeah.
Um, that is because legal references are not policies. So, the way that that reads is actually just inaccurate. The law is just the law, it's not a policy. So, what we're do- what you're doing there as a board is striking the word "policy" from legal reference. I, I think that was a response to what you were asking.
Oh, well, it was the line below that, that they be read together. Are we not reading them together anymore? I guess the law and policy.
Um, are you on the very last paragraph?
No, I'm still on the first page, I'm the fourth paragraph down.
Sorry about that.
It's under organization paragraph.
Yeah, I, I think I got it, okay. It's just the same, it's the same, uh, we think that this, this language is redundant. Um, you have to read your policy with laws, that's, there's no way not to do that. And also, just because it, again, it keeps referencing legally referenced policy, but there are no legally referenced policies. You have the law and then you have the policies that the board adopts. And that statement's just redundant because they have to be read together.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that helps.
It does, thank you.
Any other question? Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion to accept BF as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you trustee Dawson and Duncan. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, all those in favor with seven, all opposed with zero. The vote passes with a vote of seven-zero. Moving on to policy DC. The board will consider and take possible action on policy DC local. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to accept policy DC as presented?
I, I need a second.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't want to rush you. Or did you, was that an, okay, you're ready?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
I didn't.
Okay, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure I was, I was with you on that, um, and I didn't misunderstand. All right, do I have a motion to accept policy DC as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, trustees Dawson and May. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, the motion carries.
I probably should have said this in discussion. I know that there has been some talk about this policy, um, but I do think, you know, that it would keep us from not, or would help us in wanting to- it would keep us from not, or would help us in wanting to rehire if we have this policy in place.
And I understand what you're referring to, but we, do you wanna address the issue of where, why we had to make this change?
I'll have to ask Dr. Landry to address it.
Okay.
Or if Karen, either way.
It has to do with being, or do we not legally wanna say something? Isn't this the one that has to do with being compliant with the handbook and the policy and alignment and with the state law?
Yeah, I can say that, but the, your employee handbook had, had, your, your employee handbook had this in there, so your policy, the board policy was inconsistent with the employee handbook and that's why we made the change. But there were also some decisions that the CFO and that Dr. Landry had made just related to the payment of these surcharge amounts, so he can maybe explain what the thoughts were behind putting that in the handbook.
So the, you know, in the, in the past, there was a law that, that forced the district to pay the surcharge for retiree hire. And then the, this eighty-ninth legislature House Bill two repealed that law. So the, the new policy reflects that all retiree hires, they shall be responsible for the, the surcharge going forward. And that'll be unilateral across, you know, all, all employees hired under that, that status, retiree hire.
So just to be clear, that was, that was because of a change in legislation that they are responsible for that?
That's correct.
Okay.
We've already voted on that one, correct?
Yes, yes. And it's, and it passed. I don't know if I reflected that to you, Mrs. Spurlock. Um, all right, did that answer your question?
Well, I just wanted to bring it to light, kinda the reasoning.
Yep.
Okay, um, we're on to, um, the board will consider and take possible action on DP local. Do we have any discussion?
I would like just to point out, I'll, I'll make a motion if need be, that in EFA and I believe in EFB, one notable change.
Wait, we're in DP.
We're on DP.
You skipped.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I'll hold.
Thank you.
I have some amendments that I wanted to pass out to the board for your consideration. Could you pass that down?
Even with my glasses, I can't.
I know, I like.
I'm sorry. I'll read it, I'm sorry. Okay, so just a couple of proposed amendments. So I've highlighted it in pink. I wanna add in the first paragraph that the superintendent shall determine an application and screening process for chaplain candidates and then the amendment is and appropriate process and procedures. That's number one. Number two.
Can I stop you there?
Oh.
Real quick, I, I would also like to remove on that same line that you were talking about, or like you're gonna approve by the board.
Hold on.
Oh.
We have to take them one at a time.
Okay, sorry.
So you can't even move on to yours until we take a motion and a second and then we vote on that first one. We have to do them piece by piece, okay? And I know we haven't had to do a lot of this, so just, everyone needs to bear with this as we get through it. All right, so the amendment was to add in the language and appropriate process and procedures, correct? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Now, is there any discussion on that change?
Not that particular change, but I have a discussion on that, that sentence.
Okay, but we're only talking about this one.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
That's all right, this one language change.
Okay.
So all those in favor of making that, that change, show by the uplift of hands.
Can I, can I ask a question about it?
Yes.
Um, Trustee Dawson, can you explain your thought process behind that? I'm assuming that it's just you wanna ensure that. Yeah, I think the, the devil's in the detail, right? What, what the input, um, how it's gonna look, how we implement it. So I just wanna be clear that the, the superintendent would be putting together the process and procedures as well.
Thank you.
For how it will be implemented.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I had some concerns about, um, you know, do we have enough space? Will we have multiple chaplains? Will they have an office? Will they go? And that sort of thing. So I think that would be helpful if they have the, the procedures in place.
I think those were questions Dr. Landry asked also in the beginning when this policy came forward, what this would all look like. And I think we were all in agreement and understanding.
Yes.
And especially since we're not even saying we're doing it, we're just making it a, a possibility or an option. So I think that's important. So any other discussion? All right, oh, yes.
I was wondering.
Only on, only on this one piece at the moment.
Only on that one line?
Only on those.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five words.
Trustee Nelson has something next, I think, on that line and then when she's done.
Perfect, all right.
Let's vote on that one.
So let's go ahead and vote on this amendment of those five words being put in to this policy. All those in favor of and appropriate process and procedures being added to this policy in that space, please show by the uplift of hands. All right, that passes seven oh. Now is in that same paragraph, since we're there, did you have something else? Hold on, Trustee Dawson, or is, are we on to, on that?
Not, not in that paragraph.
Perfect, go to you.
Okay. I feel like you're, you're pushing aggressively. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm so sorry, I'm just trying to let you know.
I'm kidding, no, I'm kidding. Um, I just, uh, the, the final approval by the board, I, I mean, I trust our team, so I don't know that it needs to come back to us for a final approval, so my amendment would be to remove that last sentence.
Does that mean that, does that mean that they're subject, that they have to?
Wouldn't that be a human resource list?
That was my question, would it just be like what we approved, like human resources or substitutes?
The way that I'm interpreting this line is that any chaplain candidate that ultimately the superintendent has selected, you guys would have to finally approve.
And I think that goes along, I'm taking that to be the same thing as in our employment report. It would be the same type of thing, so.
But we don't approve volunteers at the board.
But what if they're, what if it was to not be a volunteer? I don't, I don't know, but.
But we would have to amend our policy if it was eventually the change.
Okay, it's, uh, so to remove all chaplains, to remove the sentence, all chap, chaplains are subject to final approval by the board, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's take a vote. Oh wait, or is there any other discussion on that?
Can you just, and maybe you explain this, um, so that it, we don't have to approve them that?
Correct, yeah, the way it's written here, and correct me if I'm wrong with Ballou, but the way it's written here is the, um, the superintendent will determine the application and screening process, but then it'll come back to the board for final approval. And I don't think that that's necessary. I trust our team and.
But we do the same thing with SHAC and we do the same thing with a multitude of other committees.
Approved members?
Yes.
But this isn't, this isn't a committee though. I'm, I'm, it's just a discussion.
Yes.
I'm happy to, to hear what everybody's opinion, I just. My assumption is these are just regular volunteers.
Yeah, is that, is that assumption correct? Are these considered volunteers or chaplains volunteers?
I mean, that's what it says, volunteers.
Okay.
All right, I did the reverse. All right, do we have, we have a motion to remove all chaplains are subject to final approval by the board and we have a second. Sorry, that was Nelson and, was it Horton? Thank you. All right, we're now ready to, are we ready to take a vote on this amendment? Okay, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All those opposed? The motion carries six one. All right, moving on to the next eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, is there anything before thirteen?
I have one more, sorry. Under responsibilities, a chaplain shall, one, be available for any student who may seek such chaplains' help or care. I would love to add in their employee as well.
Oh, so that an employee could also see?
Students and employees.
It's, and it's, it's totally a voluntary option, so students, okay, so the adding of a chaplain's provisions of care, help or counsel, where are you adding? Oh, oh, up, up higher?
Under responsibilities.
Yeah, but what number?
One.
Is it number eight?
Oh, yours printed out, kinda weird.
It's number eight on, on, sorry.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's number one on my page.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same thing.
Just ignore the numbers online.
So where it says be available for any student who may seek such chaplains' help or care, student or you're wanting to add the word employee? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that legally sound?
Yes.
Thank you, I just wanna make sure before we do this, is there any other discussion on that? Okay, do, um, okay, do we, uh, we didn't actually have a second on that. We need to have a second. Thank you, I had to follow the process there. All right, so we have Nelson and May on that one. Is there any other discussion? I apologize. All right, all in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, and that motion carries seven zero. Anything else in number nine, ten?
One, two, three, four.
It's one, two, three, four, five.
All right, so we'll just call it one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, anything else in that chunk?
Well, six is highlighted from Trustee Dawson.
So my other amendment, and we talked about this last month during the first reading, I just wanna make it clear that a, a chaplain will not be taking the place of a certified school counselor. I know we've, are kind of attenuating that, I just wanna be explicit in that, so I wanted to add in, it would be number six, not take the place of a certified school counselor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Horton, thank you. Um, any other discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote on that amendment. All in favor, show by the uplift of hands. That motion carries seven zero. All right, we're on to the next paragraph where it says for purposes of this policy, a chaplain shall be.
And then I added certified and maintain an ecclesiastical endorsement. So just adding.
A certified chaplain?
Yeah, a chaplain shall be certified and maintain an ecclesiastical endorsement.
I think it's a little vague as to what, well, sorry, is there a second?
Could it be certified with an ecclesiastical endorsement? Is that how you get a chaplain certification?
There's different, there are different certifications, so, but the term, the only thing she asked was the certification, so I have to ask, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on that?
I would like to beef that up a little bit more, from a certified, reputable and established organization. I think then would you need like some sort of RFP process?
No, because it would be on their own, they're volunteers.
Well, how do we determine that?
They have to provide it, like with their resumes and stuff, they would have to provide, and that could also be part of the process and procedures.
Of like who we deem certified and reputable? I mean, they could make a matrix or something.
But wouldn't that be under, up above where we have the superintendent setting the process and the stuff and procedures in place? Would that be part of that, Dr. Landry?
It could be, but then, then the superintendent is then deciding which of the religion, sex, whatever, is approved. That's a, that's a heavy weight.
That's why I was just trying to be a little more descriptive to help discern that.
All right, so the question is, do we want to take a vote, I guess what we need to do is take a vote on, um, just the plain word certified, and then we're going to come back and see if someone wants to, or if you even wanna amend, or do you want to amend?
Well, I just, I just wanna be clear, you know. You know, we're bringing in people to work with our students. I wanna make sure they're of the highest caliber, that they have the training, the qualification to work with our students. And having a certification ramps up that, that expectation of what quality they're gonna be delivering.
Uh, my only concern is, you know, the organizations that are doing the certifications that we, there are several out there that might not be as reputable as others, which is why I, I chose that specific language, but I think that it's important that we go with someone that's established.
So you're, but are you saying then legally, let me ask Ms. Ballou, legally if we put in certified and established?
Reputable and established.
I'm just not sure how you determine, what, what determines what's reputable? Who determines that?
Well, that might come in a procedure, maybe a matrix of some sort, like, like we have with all of our other people that we bring in, like how long have they been in business and how difficult is the certification process, you know, that kinda.
I'm just thinking that can be part of the procedures, like I don't know if we need to explicitly state that.
But Dr. Landry is stating that if we rely on it being under the superintendent's purview and you just removed the, the board from being a part of that final approval, it just puts the burden back on the superintendent to make that certification, right? Or that determination.
Right, because then, then, then it puts you in, it puts superintendent in a position to pick certain religions over others and it's just, uh, it'd be very difficult to determine which one is reputable, you know, who adjudicates that.
Let me ask Ms. Ballou, um, do you have a recommendation on how we could clean that up? I know we're on the fly here, but.
This is just my experience, you guys are the, the legal body, right? And so you're kind of like, if you will, like the legislator. And the legislature frequently passes policies and leaves some opening for staff, the superintendent, to make the determination. So I don't think there's any problem if you wanna leave it that way or if you wanna add the word reputable. The more language you put in there, the more it's going to indicate to staff and require staff to make sure that, um, you know, whoever is, whoever they're selecting or are saying are legitimate certifying agencies, that they're, you know, making sure they are reputable, that they're, what was the other word?
Established.
That they're established, that they're reputable. So then they're gonna have to think about who's, who's been certifying for a long time, what is their reputation, um, you know, are they, are they trusted entities that do this kind of work versus maybe a, I'm gonna say a fly-by-night certification program?
Does that help you, Dr. Landry, as a superintendent?
Yes, yeah, we can, we can make that work.
So the, the amendment, Ms. Dawson, was that are you okay with that language, or would you like to make that amendment to your amendment to state certified and reputable, established? An established and a.
Trying to make some.
Reputable and established cert, what would be that language? Now we've got it all mixed up, so we've gotta get it exact.
You might just say a certified, reputable and established entity or something to that effect.
From his or her faith group.
Yeah, from his or her faith group.
Endorsement.
And just to be clear, this is, uh, we're not picking one faith over another.
No.
This is, they are not to be proselytizing. This is to be a support and, you know, a support to kids.
And it's also often as well.
Okay, um, but let's stay, I, I wanted to stay focused on this language. For the purposes of this policy, a chaplain shall be certified.
Reputable.
Reputable.
I would say certified from a reputable and established.
And established organization.
Organization.
And maintain an ecclesiastical endorsement from his or her faith group certifying that such chaplain is, one, two, three.
Okay, do you want me to make?
If you're.
If you have it, yes.
So I motion to amend to add, a chaplain shall be certified from a reputable and established organization and maintain.
Entity, I believe.
Organization.
You can use organization or entity, either way.
And maintain, okay.
Yes.
Second.
All right, so we have Dawson and Horton.
I think.
I mean, I meant Dawson and Nelson, my bad, sorry. And Nelson, and you're good with that language. And is there any other discussion on that, that change? Okay, all in favor, show by the uplift of hands. Seven, okay. Motion carries seven zero. And Ms. Spurlock, did you get that?
Are you sure?
If not, I think several of us have it written down and we can go back and get it from the tape.
I do just wanna state real quick too, um, this is probably more of a procedure, but you know, just for the record, I would like our chaplains to work with our certified school counselors in the event that, if specialized services or things that they might need that is out of their realm of specialty, so.
Sure.
I just, I want it to be a collaboration between the two, so.
Of course.
What the record states.
All right, so if there's no further discussion.
Um, I just had a question about the often process.
Oh, yes ma'am, I am so sorry.
Would it be?
Would it be, um, connected with the big opt-in when parents sign, like the student code of conduct? Or could it be a separate opt-in process, and would that be listed in procedures, or would that be listed here?
It says the district shall distribute consent forms at the beginning of each school year.
But that's not like the consent form that has like everything on it, is it its own consent form?
I'm sure it would be its own consent form.
I think it, the way it's worded, it would probably be its own consent form.
That's the way I was reading it, as well as like with our, um, eighth grade, um, I can't remember what the term is, but the sex ed class, that they have to have a separate form. And the same thing happens also, trustee Horton, if you recall back when, I know it was, we've had a lot, but, if you recall back when we had Dr. Taylor and, um, Dr. Morela and I were working on and discussing the communities and schools, and how they have to have a separate-
Well, and that's what I was asking, like, if it was going to be per the lump one, or if it would be a separate one.
So, I think we're good on that. Is there any other discussion, and I apologize that I forgot to ask you, did you get your, um, your, was that your one comment?
That was it.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, um, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of these, uh, changes and adopting this policy is now amended, show by the uplift of hands. All right. The motion for DP passes with a vote of seven zero. Moving on to EFA, the board will consider and take possible action on E, uh, on EFA local. Do we have any discussion?
For a change for, I don't have any discussion other than making a motion to amend.
Okay, you can just make a mo-
Under superintendent authority, on page four of four at the very bottom. I would like to strike, the superintendent shall develop-
Four, four, wait, hold on, let everyone get there. Four of four, um, under superintendent authority, go ahead. Is everyone ready?
Yes, everyone's good.
Okay.
The superintendent shall develop, I want to strike policies and just leave procedures to ensure compliance with this policy.
That's a good catch.
Okay, so, um, that is from trustee Dungen with the second, is there a second by trustee Nelson?
Second.
Is that what you were doing?
Yep, sorry.
No, I was making sure to, we're, we're doing a lot here, so, okay. Um, is there any discussion on that change? That amendment, all right, let's vote on that amendment, please, show by the uplift of hands. All right, that is a seven zero carry. Um, is there any other discussion or request for amendment?
Was EFA, we worked on EFA for quite a while, it looks like there's a lot of changes. Was it because, um, the legislation changed, or was it, what happened?
There was a lot of it based on legislation, and if you'll notice that there's, um, in the, the language, there's things like just capitalization, but also, we've had, um, through the, the, well, and I guess I should come to Ms. Baloo. Do you have something you want to state on the EFA, the changes before?
Yeah, some of these were, um, legislative changes. In addition, um, like if you were to, for example, look at the under-selection, um, the, you know, when it says, for example, "The ability to analyze and determine the establishment of information sources." That is taking, um, paragraphs from legislation related to the social studies teaks, and what the, what the state board of education has to do when it adopts the social studies teaks, and, um, applying it to all of your instructional materials. So some of it is based on legislative change, and some of it is just board preference for how, when the superintendent is selecting instructional materials, what needs to be included or reviewed in those materials.
As a matter of consistency?
Um, well, I think that one thing it does do is help with consistency, because your social studies materials are already required to, for example, require students to analyze and determine the reliability of informational sources. But instead of just applying this to the social studies materials, you would also be applying it, for example, to your math, um, or your science. So as your superintendent is looking for instructional materials, this is providing guidance in that section on what, what he's going to be looking for when he's trying to, um, determine materials to adopt for the district.
When he's determining materials, I noticed that we like struck the line that says, "I am the superintendent, shall ensure that professional staff select instructional materials." I'm assuming that's going to stay procedural?
Can you tell me where you're at?
It's the top of, oh, go ahead.
It's like the third paragraph, um, it's the first strikeout.
On, on what page, I'm sorry?
EFA, page one of four.
One of four.
At the very top. And I know for me, one of the reasons why I was looking for that change in here is because of the fact that we've had conflict of, well, who, we're, we're given that authority to make those selections, but then in our policy, we were saying the superintendent would make those selections. Our authority is given to us under, that's one of the things we're supposed to do, that we take an oath to do.
Right.
And then, but then in our policy, we're saying, we were contradicting that with saying that the superintendent or designee shall ensure the professional staff select instructional materials. In the end, the board can give-
That line still did say, "The ultimate authority for determining and approving," I, lies with the district, but I feel like that we've kind of cut, you know, some out of the process.
We, we did, because that's where we came into a conflict, when we came up with trying to decide who got to choose. Was the board the one that was supposed to choose, or the superintendent, or his designee, or the staff supposed to choose? Because it was in conflict. And so by making that decision and keeping with the, what's the authority that's been granted to us, we can always designate it to him, just like we do with the contract, with contracts, or, um, with other processes or things that we're doing. But this then clarifies who actually is, is responsible for it, and technically, we're the ones responsible as trustees, but we can designate others to do it. It's just that it, this clarifies it, that it is the trustees, not the superintendent.
And that's laid out in the Texas Education Code, correct? Do we need to reference that in here? Or this is fine, that's language?
You don't typically, we did do it in some of your policies because we want to track the exact legislative language. You don't always, or you're not typically doing it. I think that the big clarification here that your board president was referring to is that, um, you as a board have a preference that your, and it's in here a couple times, that your superintendent, um, is going to, while, while your superintendent may select the instructional materials, the ultimate authority for those materials relies with the board. So you're not just wholesale delegating the instructional material process to your superintendent. It, it always can come back to the board, and the board has the ultimate authority over the materials.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And in addition, um, the certi- the superintendent has to certify that all instructional materials that are purchased are in alignment with board policy. So that's just another, um, I would say, change to like really strengthen that the superintendent has to select them, while he has to select the materials, he also has to certify to you that the materials align with your policy, but ultimately, you guys get to determine what materials. It's not up to the superintendent or the staff, if that makes sense.
The, the other thing on it that I'd like to point out is that so often, we are not in a process of it at all. Things just come to us as the final decision, and we're asked to approve it. This lets us be sure that we are part of it by us being, by us either directing the superintendent with certain parameters, or, um, not just the superintendent and his staff making a decision and then bringing it to us at the end, and it's either an all or nothing. We, we didn't have really a pro- a part in the process.
Did we have an amendment, or are we?
She was, it was just a discussion point on it that she was asking, I mean, are, are you asking for an amendment?
Um, I mean, I, I would like to revert back to what we had.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that, or are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of reverting it back to the superintendent, or his designee shall ensure the professional staff select the instructional materials in accordance with the district policy and administrative procedures, um, and the ultimate authority for determining and approving the curriculum and instruction program of the district lies with the board. Be reinstated back into this EFA policy, show by the uplift of hands. Okay, that's two. All those opposed, which is, one, two, three, four, five, so that, that motion fails.
I would just like to state that the revised statement says basically the same thing, that we still may select, or the superintendent may select. So we could still, as Misty mentioned, we can still allow that to be the case, but it just ultimately is, I, I just like the way the second paragraph, or the revised paragraph reads. Just stating that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I do, I have another amendment.
Yes ma'am.
On the bottom of page one of four.
Yes ma'am.
I noticed that the numbering, I don't know if this is worth amending, but that is a, a change that I noted, the numbering's off.
I noted that too, so what I would just suggest is that when you guys adopt this, that you, when you, um, adopt it, you say, "adopt it," um, but allow staff to, allow staff to correct grammatical or typographical-
It was a minor change.
Errors. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that you need to go all the way through the amendment.
Okay. So, it's not necessary-
Do we need to make that amendment?
Okay.
I don't think you need to amend this, when you guys adopt them, when you do the motion to adopt this policy, just say, and direct staff to make typ- to correct typographical errors.
So that's been noted, I have one more mention.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
On, again, on page two of four, right above rejected instructional material, the last paragraph, I want to strike policies from, "The superintendent shall develop policies and procedures," and just leave that as, "The superintendent shall develop procedures."
Why, why are we striking policies from that?
Because the superintendent doesn't develop policies, they only develop procedures. I just want that clarification in the text. We, we've already done it once at the, on the last page, but that's just something I caught. It was the way the policy was written.
It's consistent with what we just amended.
It's consistent, yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, oh. Well, we can discuss, we have to do the second first.
Yeah, we have to have a second before-
So, second.
Okay, so that was, um, Dungen and Nelson, and now we can have discussion. Go ahead, trustee Dawson.
Technically, what we just approved with BF says policies, and policy amendments may be initiated by the superintendent. So that's in conflict with what we just voted.
Okay.
And I think that's codified in law.
For this particular EFA, or for the previous policy?
We say in policy development, BF that we just approved, that the superintendent may initiate policies or policy amendments.
I didn't catch it there, my bad. This is a care question, could we, um, is there a, a way we could direct you to remove that from any policy? Is there like a blanket, um, direction we could take? To remove policies from the usage of that term policies in our policies? Does that make sense?
I, I'm not in favor of that personally.
I think it's contradictory. I'm just, it's consistent with our, with our policies in the past, and I think this is just the, the approach T is taken with wording these statements.
Yeah, I don't think we should just do a global-
Change.
Change. Um, also because the word policies used a few times through, you know, and I think, like, I think I know what you guys are referencing every time, but I, I think we want to make sure everybody gets to discuss it and understand.
Let, let me just see if I, this helps, if this helps you with it, out of curiosity, and if what I'm saying is legally standing, Ms. Baloo, is that while they, a superintendent, um, may develop, we've said that they, they can possibly develop policy before, because we just said that, but they don't, they don't actually vote it through. We would have to approve it. So, if Dr. Landry was to come to us, which there has been, just like this policy that we just passed about the rehire, retire, rehire situation, we had to amend that policy. It wa- it came from administration to us to make that change, but we actually ultimately had to make that authority, vote on it, and make that change.
Just to be clear though, in discussions, especially from the dais, when we're talking about policies versus procedures, it's always been easier to reference procedures that are done on the district side versus policy for discussion purposes. So I would like to be consistent, because that's been working, and I don't want to change that universally, at least.
Dr. Landry, do you have any, oh, I am so sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm, I mean, that's my point, is I don't want to cause confusion in, in a, in an, in an area where we've been, when that's been clear, is that there's a procedural side of things. I think that's how the district's operated in, historically, and I don't want to change that, um, by just the way that we write policy. I want to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, you're correct, right? So the, the policy will dictate to the administration to then, uh, create procedures to adhere to. Um, but in, there isn't, there are instances where a policy would be generated from the superintendent or the administration to put forward for you guys to approve, uh, based on, um, you know, whether, uh, you know, what's working, or uh, what might work better from a, from a district standpoint. So to, to, to take it unilaterally out and not allow the superintendent any access, um, you know, might, might hamper that ability.
So you're saying by referencing policies here in the superintendent's authority, that, that would allow you or the superintendent to bring forth a policy for approval by the board?
Correct, for your consideration, and, um, like we've done, we've done, you know, several, so we've, uh, referenced CH. That came, that, that we put that forward, that came from, from, from us. Um, that didn't generate from the board or from, you know, any other agency. So, um, to, to strike that from all of it would, would ham, you know, kind of, kind of hamper that ability.
That brings, that sheds light on it, that gives it some con- context.
But, but the overall authority and approval of any policy would be the board's discretion. So it's just who has the ability to generate a policy for consideration.
I'm fine with leaving it how it's written.
In the past, just, just for clarity, uh, from my sanity, um, I think it was in EFB where we made the most changes. If it was written like that in the past, then I'm, I'm fine retracting my previous amendment. Because I want to be consistent, policies about being consistent, so.
I'm not sure if it was written that way in the past. I do think the idea was, um, that you want to give, like if the superintendent did want to develop a policy to put in front of you that he could, however, I'm sensitive to the fact that, um, but I think there's other, I do think there's other areas that make it clear that the, the superintendent cannot unilaterally just adopt a policy and start. Like, the, there's not, there's nothing that would lead you to believe, and there's provisions in here that say that he cannot adopt a policy unilaterally and just put it on your board policy book and start doing it without board approval. I don't know if that helps at all.
And this does help, I think the conversation helps. You see what I'm attempting to, to do, and, and just the way that we've discussed these in the past. We've had a procedural side, and then the board has handled the policy. I, I don't think policies were touched much before we came on board, so, I think that might be contributing to the confusion, so. Um, if, I'm fine with the verbiage as is, I could retract the previous amendment, amendment, okay, you already done?
Done.
So, we can move forward with leaving this, this the way it is, with policies and procedures.
Thank you ma'am. Any other discussion for EFA? Seeing none, um, I would like to call for a motion.
Summled.
A motion to accept policy EFA with the revisions to, um, the staff being able to correct typographical errors, and, um, the change, we didn't have that change.
I don't know if we seconded, Misty? Did we second the motion?
I, I was calling the motion right now, but I was trying to make sure that, um, what Ms. Baloo said, that we had to have the, the state, the, the language state.
I moved too fast, my apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't even hear you, sorry.
Oh, I said, "summled."
So, that's why I was like, I was just stating, all right, so let's start this over again, please. Um, may I have a motion for the EFA policy to be accepted with the revisions that the amendments that were voted, oh, we didn't take a vote on the staff, that's the part we did not take a vote on. Um, staff, do we, uh, we need to amend this motion so that it reflects that the staff, or in the motion, we need to do the staff correct typographical errors, and the motion that trustee Dungen made, uh, on this one too? You want to cancel this one? All right, is, now we have to make sure that's okay with the whole board, though.
I thought that's what you said, I should probably retract my previous-
That was the first one, this was the second one. That was the first one. This was the second one.
Right, so both of my suggestions to remove policies.
You want to remove and vote?
Yes.
Okay, so for the board's clarification, earlier in, when we first started on page four of four, we took a vote on the superintendent shall develop procedures, and we removed policies in that past 7-0. We need to have a second that we revert back to the original language.
Second.
All right, so now that basically counters back to the original language there. But we need to take a vote. All those in favor of reverting back on page four of four, the language where it reverts back to the way it was originally presented in our board book, including the word develop policies and procedures, please show by the uplift of hands. Four, five, six, seven. All right, so we're back to a 7-0 vote to put it back. And her other, she had already removed before we took a vote, her amendment on page two of four for that. So the only change that I see in EFA, if I am correct, is the typographical error corrections. Is that, is everyone in agreement on that? Okay. So I entertain a motion that we accept EFA, giving staff the ability to correct typographical errors in EFA as presented in the board book.
Summat, second.
Sorry, that was really a lot. All right, Duggan, or Nelson and Duggan, thank you very much. All those in favor of accepting it as amended, please show by the uplift of hands. Three, four, five. All those opposed? Two.
I want to make a note that I'm only opposed because of, I'm, that one change that we mentioned previously.
Same.
Okay, thank you. Five, two, and the motion passes.
Thank you all. I apologize for the confusion.
No worries, we're good. We got it. Everyone, you know, there's, it's late, and we are all trying to do the best that we're doing for what works for, what is best for our district. All right, we're on to the board. We'll consider and take possible action on EFB. Do we have any discussion?
So I see that we've crossed out again, because we just did EFB, right?
No, we haven't. We just did EFB.
No, no, like, but we did it within the last few months?
No.
Yeah, no. This is the second reading. We have done EFB.
Okay, and what we've crossed out, like?
Was there before.
That, so that's just the entire old policy?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And we've updated it per legislative changes as well.
Okay.
Any other further discussion or questions?
I'll just say the reason that was done, where we just crossed out the old policy is because the legislative changes were so extensive that the tracking just became so confusing that it just seemed like we needed to just lay out a new policy because the changes are so extensive.
Any other discussion?
I have more of a, it's not having to do, well, it is having to do with the policy, but I've noticed in practical terms, when kids check out library books, there is an automatic notification, email sent out every single day. Can we fix that?
We should, yes.
It's, 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 it's really cumbersome for parents. And I think we just need to send out an email once when they check out the book, and then once when it's turned back in. Is that possible with our technology to do that? Dr. Lambert.
I feel like I've talked to you a lot this week.
Sorry.
So the, a little bit of history, the reason that it sends out the notification every day that the book is checked out is because that's the direction we were given by the board at the time to do that.
That's not correct. The board didn't ask for it every day. We just asked that the parent be notified when a child checked out a book and when a child checked it back in.
That was a procedural decision.
Okay, so, but with our current technology, we can, using the library system, there is a new function that we can do, that we can set up, that would send out the notification simply on checkout of the book. But that's something new that we will have to set up to do.
And if we could let parents know that we're going to update this system? Because I don't, I mean, you can opt out of that, right? And then you don't get any notifications. So I'm wondering how many parents have actually opted out? And we, if we just let them know, hey, you're just going to be getting one from now on, FYI? If we could do that.
We can, and I'm sure we can figure out how many have opted out. I don't know it off the top of my head. I do know many have. As I read the draft of the policy though, I don't believe there's an opt-out allowed in this current draft. Like that notification has to be sent. I believe the word says shall be sent.
Okay, but I think that, that was legislative. That was a legislative change, wasn't it? That parents would be notified of the books their students were checking out.
Yes, students have to be notified every single time their student checks out a library book. And, and along with, with the book title and some other information.
A new book though, right? Not the same book every single day?
It's not, no, there's no requirement that they're notified every day that the child has the book checked out, but they have to be notified when it's checked out.
And I would like that to remain important.
I don't mind it coming every day. I, it reminds me to return it and reminds me to look for it, so.
I, the only thing on.
This isn't part of our policy though, correct?
I do mind it. I'm.
I just wonder if we could just table this part of the discussion since it's not in policy.
I think it's worthy of, I think it was worthy of mention.
Mentioning is great, but we've got 20 other policies left.
No, we're, we're.
Well, I have heard from a lot of parents that that is an issue, and a lot of parents have opted out for that reason. So if we could go ahead and just make it where it's once, once a checkout, I think that would be ideal.
Dr. Landry, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, we, well, we can, we can certainly research that and, from a procedural standpoint, and, and tweak it from there.
Thank you sir, very much.
Sorry, I didn't mean to derail. I just, it was pertinent to this policy, so I wanted to bring it up.
Is there any other discussion regarding EFB? Seeing no further discuss, yes?
I just had a quick question. I'm on the pornographic material.
What page, please?
I'm looking for it. Sorry, I have a note. Okay, five. Is this directly from law? Where it says, unless required by state or federal law, library materials shall not include pornographic material? So that makes it seem like they can include pornographic material if it's in state or federal law?
Um, I think that, I put that, I actually take responsibility for that. I put that in there because my concern was that you may have some pictures or depictions in your health classes, dealing with human sexuality, that may require things that otherwise would be considered graphic or inappropriate. Of course, under new SB 12, for any student to participate or see those pictures, their student would have to opt them in to being able to take that human sexuality class. But that was my concern, is that if you have a health class and it is requiring students to learn about bodily autonomy, various body parts, how they operate, that we would want to be able to say that in that case, students could look at material that otherwise would be 100% prohibited under your policy.
Kind of like a No David type thing?
Yeah, like, just, just, so if it is required by state or federal law, or required by the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, students would be able to look at it. The only case that I can see that happening in would, just looking at the teaks and other things, would be in the healthcare class curriculum, or, but I will say this, there's also anatomy classes. I, I can see some people taking different depictions of, of things in those classes and finding them pornographic if they were presented anywhere else, but as part of that, that class and that material. I hope that helps.
Okay, yes, it does. I guess you just mean like nudity or like, because when I think of pornographic, I think of like an act, but I guess in anatomy class, they have those drawings?
Well, it says in here sexually explicit material. So I think some of the material in some of the health and anatomy and other classes, if you were viewing it not as part of that class, some people would, would find it to be sexually explicit.
Okay, thank you. Yes ma'am. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to accept EFB.
Summat.
As presented.
Second.
All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The motion carries 7-0, and EFB is adopted. We're on to, the board will consider and take possible action on EHBAG local. Is there any further discussion on EHBAG?
I have some concerns with this one. First, I noticed that we are going to, it looks like we're giving copies of, or a summary of the district position and the dispute, including the legal claims, defenses, and relief sought.
Could you, could you tell us where you are in the policy, please?
Yes, page one, there's one page.
Yes.
Under legal report.
Thank you, and?
Um, it looks like B and C.
For B?
Mm-hmm, for B and C. A timeline and summary of district efforts to resolve the dispute. I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned about the amount of information the board is getting with this policy.
Because?
Because it seems like giving the board a file about all of the special ed cases every month is going to be really burdensome on our special ed department. And it's also, it feels a little bit invasive that we're going to be going through each special ed file monthly.
I, it's not that we'd be going through every, well, this isn't my policy, I apologize. Trustee May?
Point, go ahead.
Well, it's not that we'd be going through every single sped student's folders and their background and their information. What we're trying to do is make sure that if there's a dispute, which is one trigger that would give us information on anything in particular of a student, has entered a formal administrative litigation or judicial litigation, that's a huge move. That's more than just a, a, looking at any, any one of Jack Jill or Johnny's sped folders. That is anyone that has entered into a litigated or judicial administrative litigation or a judicial litigation, and that's important for the board to know. In the past, we have not ever, I know that things, I mean, there haven't been as many items. I can only think of a couple that have come to us since you all were elected. But prior to this, the board has ne, not been up to date on anything litigation-wise.
Have we, have we requested that information?
As far as a report or anything on any litigation? Well, in the past, it hasn't been presented to us until it gets to a point where we're not even aware that something has risen to that, that level until it's already to the escalated point. By us knowing and receiving and stating by policy that we would be given, and a summary doesn't necessarily mean that we're being given all of their files and all of their details. It's more of like in closed session that we would be getting a summary and an update in these issues monthly from our, either our sped department or our legal situation, in our legal counsel, et cetera. And I know you worked on that and really hammered out those details with trustee May and, and somewhat with myself, but mainly trustee May as you were working through this. Ms. Ballou?
Yeah, so I would say, depending upon the law firm, they would typically maybe go through a status of litigation report. But to the extent that there's any concern that you're going to have a law firm or that you want to codify that that is going to happen, you don't even have to request it, you don't have to worry about it, it's just going to happen. This codifies that it's the board's policy that you're going to be looking at every case. I will also say, the first part of the policy says, that one through four, that you're not going to be getting an extensive amount of information. You're just essentially going to be getting a list, and I'll just say this, just based on the facts of your district. There's not a ton, ton of special ed students where you're incurring legal expenses. So this is not going to be a report right now, based on historical practices, where, that's going to be very long. When a student starts to incur legal expenses, you're not going to know about that student. You're just going to know about the estimated fees, the general topic. To your board president's point, when you start being, when, when the issue starts getting in front of the Texas Education Agency or in front of a judge, you are incurring substantial litigation expenses at that point in time. So that's where you would start getting a lot more information about what is happening in the case. I'll also mention though, that some of this would be publicly available information anyway, because if you're in front of a, a trial court, you know, it's possible some of that information would be publicly available anyway. I mean, they, they could work to keep it under seal and things, but yeah. So when you, when you would start getting more information about what's happening in the case would be at the time when there's substantial litigation expenses being incurred by the district.
And I will say that this provides a level of transparency that we have not had ever, since I've been on the board and it sounds like since prior years as well. And a, a, you know, a case that hits that number four can get big quick. I think we have one right now that is about 185,000. That was at the last time we checked. And, and we don't know anything about that. And if we're looking for ways to, 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 to find ways to, to do business a bit better, that could be one of those ways that we could do business a bit better.
Well, and also.
For the taxpayers.
Well, not only, yes, for the taxpayers, and I don't want it to be just about money. In my, in my opinion, by us being aware of it, it lets us be asking questions. Is, is there something we could have done better? Is, is there a better way we could have serviced that, that child or handled the issues with that parent? Or, I mean, it triggers us as a board to be mindful of this, wait, is, you know, what is the situation and, and could we have done something better? More importantly, is there, are, are you stating that we shouldn't be getting an update, trustee Semler? I just want to make sure.
What's the amendment? Do we have an amendment?
I'm stating that I think that we should just not do this policy and just ask for the information we want. Just, we could just ask for it.
Okay, so, I, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this policy at this time?
I do want to just make one more point.
Yes ma'am.
That we just approved the legal contracts with Ms. Ballou and her, and her firm. And the, this number four, the, the due process and the litigation is not included in the flat, flat fee. So it is something we need to pay attention to, and this policy gives us a good cadence to take, to take note of that.
And, and if a board doesn't even think to ask that, because we're buried in a lot of things as well, this puts it as policy that they, we just get the update.
I am okay with the executive session update for the board. I do have a question about posting it on the website, and any FERPA implications that could apply from that. I know it says that it would avoid a FERPA situation, but the special education community is small and, you know, they might, well, I mean, small in that you talk a lot about cases especially. So I think it could possibly be interpreted as one family's case or another. But I do agree that I, I would like to see a report of the fees as they come in. So I agree with the top part of the policy.
So if I'm hearing you, you're concerned about FERPA violations or potential FERPA violations?
With, with the website report.
Okay, so back to that, because it was one of the things that had to be worked through legally. Would you like to address that, Ms. Ballou?
Yeah, and I think that, I'll emphasize that this says, what the report will include is a "may", and that's specifically left that way so that your CFO does have flexibility in what she's going to put on the website, and in no case can she violate, or, you know, can the district violate FERPA. What, the biggest thing that we did here is make sure, because this is really about trying to understand how the district is spending limited dollars, is you're not listing, for example, very clear in this policy, it's not going to say this case and these litigation expenses were the result of autistic children, or these cases or expenses were the result of hospitalized children. All it's going to say is, we have this much expenses going to ARD cases, we have this much expensive going to TEA cases, we have this much expenses going to judicial cases where it's in front of a, you know, trial court. But I think it's a point well taken, so if there's absolutely any concern, I think, and that's why this. But I think it's a point well taken, so if there's absolutely any concern, I think, and that's why this policy is not rigid, it doesn't say you will put up a report and it will have this. It's trying to allow for some flexibility so that if there are any FERPA concerns, we can, um, you know, put the categories up that are going to ensure that no student is unmasked. You know, another way that you could look at it, and I know that the CFO and I have talked about, is maybe you would just have two categories. One would be, how much are you spending on 504, how much are you spending on non-504? So, you know, or other, so we would, we would, we would definitely work-
An ongoing-
Yeah, like how much are you? So there's, there's various ways you could, you could try to put up the data so that the public understands how much is being spent and kind of in a general way, what it's being spent on without, um, without anybody able to identify any one in particular student. But it is, it is a sensitivity, and I, I can tell you that, um, it, you can't violate FERPA. So if it turns out we cannot put out a report that we feel comfortable with and that we think is going to unmask a student, we just can't put out the report. I mean, that's the long and the short of it.
Which goes back to procedure as well.
Yeah.
We've got a policy that says may, not shall.
We've got a may, may not shall, so it's not a rigid, um, and the board has to-
The district shall put out on its website report, it doesn't say may.
It says shall, yeah.
Shall.
The content of-
The content of the report is a may.
What would be included in the report?
It says the report may consist of, and that's to allow for very broad discretion.
As a protection for our student.
So that we have some, so that the CFO and, um, obviously your general counsel will be reviewing it to make sure we don't think there's any chance that any of the data that, that we're putting out could result in, in, you know, inappropriate unmasking of a student.
I'm, I'm just very concerned that we have people in our special ed department that are very overwhelmed with all the reporting already, and we're adding another report.
This is actually coming from legal more than, from them. This would be more coming when we'd end up in a litigated situation.
So would, would our legal be preparing the report, not, not the special education department?
The vast majority of this would be, so on the, on the top part, the vast majority of it would be being prepared by your general counsel's office. Um, we would need to, though, talk to your special education department, um, to some degree about, you know, what is happening, so they will have to participate in the, in the report. On the bottom report, that will be being generated by just the CFO and the general counsel. And the way that we've contemplated it right now, anyway, is that, um, we are going to bill according to the categories. And so the CFO should be able to quickly just say, um, we spent this much on ARD, we spent this much on, um, you know, trial, trial court cases and that kind of stuff. So I think there's going to be a little bit, for sure, on that top part of work by the special education, um, department. But I think the, the bottom report will be less work on them, because that's just going to be more of a financial pull, if you will.
I'd like to motion to call a question.
I, I have one more question.
A, a motion was made, is there a second? Okay, so all those in favor of calling the vote, show by the uplift of hands. All those opposed?
Didn't she ask it?
Okay, the motion was called for the vote, so we'll move on with, do I have a motion to accept EHBAG?
So moved.
As presented.
So moved.
Thank you trustee Duggan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you trustee May, all in favor, show by the uplift of hands for the policy EHBAG as presented. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed?
I'd like to abstain, I need more information to know what the report would look like.
Um, you can't-
This is the second reading.
Okay, then opposed.
Thank you, and then, um, the motion passes, five, two. Moving on to policy FNAA, is there any discussion regarding policy FNAA?
No.
All right, do I have a motion to accept FNAA local as presented in our board book?
So moved.
Thank you trustee-
Uh, we're moving through this too fast, I don't even know what we're voting on.
Um, that-
No, FFB is actually in the first reading, it ac- it was clerically put in the wrong.
Thank you.
So, um, second by trustee, who was the second? I didn't hear.
Not me.
Dawson? Okay, just, um, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands.
I don't even know what we're voting on.
FNAA.
We already, I asked if there was any discussion for FNAA.
Minute to just orient myself.
Let's pause, can we pause?
Okay, we are on policy FNAA local.
Student expression, distribution of non-school literature.
Is there any, um, discussion?
I do would like to make a point of order, when we announce these, can we go ahead and, and include the title of the policy?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
That gives a pause.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, I had a motion brought by trustee Duggan and trustee Dawson seconded, all those in favor of FNAA, show by the uplift of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The motion passes, seven zero. All right, going to GKDA, non-school use of facilities and distribution of non-school literature. Is there a discussion? Hold on. Did you, uh, did I get, are you there, trustee Semler? Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, then I will call for a motion to accept GKDA as presented in our board book.
So moved.
Thank you trustee Nelson, second?
Second.
Thank you trustee Dunk- Duncan. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. Four, five, six, seven. The motion passes, seven zero. Now we're on to discussion items, um, not for a vote tonight. Uh, the board will discuss revisions to board policies BED through GF. Uh, local as listed in our board book, no action will be taken on these tonight, on these policies. I will open with policy BED. I just would like to remind all those, um, that the board has, um, asked, uh, Dr. Landry, Dr. Vincent, uh, Ms. Baloo, and had the opportunity to ask questions and, um, discuss with policy services team and general, interim general counsel regarding these policies leading into this. So that being said, is there, that, um, the recommendation for policy board meeting public participation? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to policy DF. Discussion on policy DF, which is termination of an employ- of employment. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to item DGBA local. This is, um, personnel management relations, employee complaints and grievances, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to EA local. The board of trustees, instructional goals and objectives. Is there any discussion? EA? Seeing none, we'll move on to E, oh, sorry?
I was just saying that's a baby policy.
Oh, yes, it was. Um, seeing, uh, we will move on to EMB, which had to have a definition added, which? EMB. Seeing no discussion?
Can you state the, the title of that policy?
I'm trying to get to it, my paper was out of order. EMB is, um, miscellaneous instructional policies teaching about controversial issues.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. All right, seeing none, we will move on to FA. Policy FA, parents' rights responsibilities, another little baby policy. Is there any discussion?
Is this one also from recent legislation, is that what these are from?
Yes, this is completely to conform and is consistent with legislative changes that are required.
Thank you. Ms. Baloo, that's the case for all of these, correct? Just for the record.
Most of them.
The only one on this list that I'd say that, um, uh, goes, might, might go slightly beyond the legislation would be EMB, but everything else is just purely to comply with new Texas legislation.
Right, and EMB is, is Senate Bill twelve, correct?
Yes, it's Senate Bill twelve.
Okay.
With the board meetings shall be held outside of regular business hours, I'm, that's just the regular board meeting that it's referring to?
Which one, where are you ma'am?
Are you at FA?
FA, right?
Are we on FA?
Um, FA, that's parental rights.
That's how I interpret it, trustee Horton.
Yes, that's how we interpret it, regular business hours for, um, our meetings.
Regular, regular board meetings?
Yes.
But special board meetings are-
Could vary.
Could vary.
But, is that correct, are we interpreting that properly?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear what you're-
I am so sorry, page one of one, FA local policy under, um, it says board meetings shall be held outside of regular business hours, is that all?
That's all, includes special, um, meetings as well.
Okay. Everyone?
And that's in, what, state law?
Yeah, and the, um, idea is particularly with special meetings, that sometimes they are being, um, held at times that were inconvenient for parents. And so the legislature's, you know, selected that you, you're going to hold, uh, essentially your board meetings at times that are convenient for parents to attend, which is usually not during regular business hours.
Any other discussion?
Business hours is defined as five P M., is that true?
Actually, that's a, a question has come up, it's even come up with you guys. Um, we are defining it right now as eight to five. I think if the, the district wanted to, um, define it differently, if we needed, needed to, we would, but, um, sometimes, like, you know, a general thing is eight to five, but I don't know, we could definitely talk. I do know that, um, at this point, I like advise that you guys shouldn't have meetings at seven thirty A M. because I think that, well, maybe you don't want to, but also because I think that arguably some of your campuses are opening early in the morning. And so, um, what I'll just say is our legal guidance will always be, if there's any question that you are having a board meeting during an operating hour of your district, we will not do it at that time.
What about committee meetings?
It just said regular board meeting.
It's just regular board meetings and special meetings, but it, it does include special, especially called board meetings, so.
Okay, um, is there any other discussion on that one, FF, um, I mean, uh, FA? All right, moving on to FFB, this is the threat assessment policy that, um, was, we were not compliant with. And trustee Horton brought this to us and got the policy written, we were supposed to have one. So I thank you trustee Horton for that, but, um, are there any questions regarding or discussion regarding FFB local policy threat assessment?
That, I'm, I don't see that anywhere.
It, it was up under-
Section.
It, it's clerically got put up under second readings, but it's really a first reading, so we moved it to where it should have been.
I thought, I got it.
Um, ooh, mine is cut off. I think it was sent to you.
Okay.
Um, separately. All right, um, that's the threat assessment policy that, that the district was supposed to establish, and it, it, we will be bringing it back this next month, so. But just in the, if you could do us a favor and make sure that you get it, and then, oh, okay, good.
Yeah, I haven't, I was just trying to locate it.
Okay, um, seeing no further discussion. All right, um, we'll move on to, um, discuss revisions to board policy FL, the student records. And this again was legislative discussion. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to FM. And I will tell you what that is in one second, hold on. FM is the student activities, extracurricular activities, absences, et cetera. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to FNG local. Um, students' rights, oh wait, it's under students' rights and responsibilities, student and parent. Basically, it was a change from complaints to grievances. Any cha- any discussion?
Is that verbiage in legislation, is that why we're changing that in every one of our policies? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Um, there were changes to the grievance policies made in legislation.
Okay, thank you.
And we need to be compliant with it.
Sure.
So, um, all right, I will open discussion for policy GF local, public complaints, which is back to what we were just referring to. Any communication, discussion, questions? All right, that brings us to item eleven on closed session. It is now ten oh four, the board will now move to closed session as an, um, as authorized, sorry, I didn't do this. As authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, and five five one point zero eight two, to discuss the items listed in section eleven of the agenda. All final votes and actions will be taken in open session, the board will call back individuals as necessary for each agenda item. However, an individual's presence must be, um, necessary for the discussion outlined in the agenda, and they will be excused once their presence is no longer required. We are adjourned for this time. Andrew. The time is twelve thirteen A M. And we are now back in open session, no final action was taken in closed session, we will now proceed with the rest of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on superintendent's recommendation to propose termination for good cause and authorize notice proposing mid-contract termination of employment contract of Angela Goller. Do I have a motion?
I move to propose termination for good cause and authorize notice proposing mid-contract termination of employment contract for Angela Goller, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Duggan and Nelson have made the, um, motion and seconded, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, the motion passes, seven zero. Moving on to the next item on our agenda. Discussion and possible action on a real estate purchase, do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the superintendent to negotiate purchase of this property.
Thank you trustee Duggan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. S- trustee Semler, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. The motion passes, seven zero, thank you very much. Moving on to the next item. Um, we're going to skip C, we're going to go to D. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action concerning FNG level three grievance appeal. The board has no jurisdiction and we are taking no action on this matter. So that brings us up to, um, item thirteen, requests from trustees regarding future board agenda items. Are there any requests from trustees for future agenda items at this time? Remember, they can always be submitted following this evening.
Um, yes, I have a submission for an amendment to policy, um, CY, the use of our logos.
Thank you, I will follow up with you following this meeting regarding that issue. Hearing no further business, this meeting is adjourned and the time is twelve sixteen. Thank you all very much for your service this evening and for those with us.